Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. The first item is Citizen Input for Anything That Is Not On The Agenda. So is there anybody in our Zoom meeting who's attending with a hand up possibly? Are there any phone numbers that we don't recognize? Okay, seeing none. So the Board of Commissioner still is available for Citizen Input. It could be written. Email is citizeninput@deschutes.org. You can contact any Commissioner directly if you'd like, but then also the meeting is available via Zoom to do that. And with notification, please come join us in person if you'd like. So the opportunities are there. At this time, Consent Agenda.
Oh, I do have a comment.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank everyone that did send a postcard to the Governor last week regarding vaccinations for Deschutes County. I feel badly mentioning this because we realize that so many counties on the other side of the mountains are suffering today, but our vaccination report for this week shows that Deschutes County is getting 4,600 vaccinations and Multnomah County is getting 40,250. Now, you realize they're only four times bigger than we are, and somehow they are still getting 40,000 and we're only getting 4,600. We really don't want to wait until next Christmas to have herd immunity in Deschutes County. So please continue to send your postcards to the Governor and hopefully they'll get their power on. And, you know, it's been a quite significant storm on that side of the mountain, and I guess we just have to feel fortunate that the snow here is at Hoodoo and Mount Bachelor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, Consent Agenda at this time.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Deere?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang and Chair of the House. So item number seven is a presentation. We're going to welcome our leadership from the High Desert Stampede here this morning and talk about events in Deschutes County in the near future. So thank you very much for joining us. Mr. Fast.
Thank you. I'm Dennis Fast. I'm Chairman of the High Desert Stampede, and we're working hard to bring something to this community. There's not much going on, and it's certainly been challenging. And for a brief history of the High Desert Stampede, this is actually our fifth event that we've ever put on. So we're a rather new rodeo. We're not a huge rodeo, but we're becoming extremely important to the industry. We're becoming extremely important to the West Coast in the rodeo thing. And I think more importantly, it's important to our community to have something. Now, we're proceeding as safely and as responsibly as we can. We continue to have a very, very flexible safety plan that we're working on. We're working hand in hand with the Deschutes Fair and Expo. They've been outstanding partners to us. They have great leadership, and they have really helped us through this process. And they're the kind of conduit for us from our rodeo group to the county and the county health officials and on to state. So we're moving forward as best we can. We currently have tickets on sale. We're selling one-third of the tickets available in that facility, and actually 30%. And, you know, that's probably where we're going to stay. We hope to get better, but that's probably where we're going to stay. Because we've reached that level of part of the pro tour in the Professional Rodeo Association, we're one of the top 60 rodeos in the country. And to do that, we have, our expenses actually go up while our income is going down. And it's a difficult, difficult process that we're in. But we're going to be televised live on the Cowboy Channel. Certainly, Deschutes County and Redmond are going to be getting a lot of exposure. They're starting to promote that on the Cowboy Channel currently nationally, and that's quite an achievement. We've expanded to three days so more contestants could be involved, more fans could come, and that was the easiest, not the easiest, it was one way to expand that safety plan.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're still working at it. It's a total work in progress. We couldn't do it without community support, and we're getting good community support. And we really feel like this is important to our area for something to do, and something healthy to do, and hopefully that we can do this respectfully and responsibly in the safety plan and move forward.
So what are the dates of the event? I didn't hear that.
Oh, I missed that. We're always the last of March. We're the last weekend in March. This year, the performances are March 25th, 6th, and 7th. We're having a special section because of the overflow of competitors on Wednesday evening, the 24th. And that is a non-paid entry for that, and it'll be kind of fun, too.
Wonderful. Introduction?
Chad Morris, High Desert Stampede. Like to expand a little bit on the safety plan and really how we're proactively seeking ways to responsibly and safely provide a community event. Normally, we expect 4,000 to 5,000 attendees each night. As Dennis said, we only have 30% capacity, but that's still enough people that we have to have a plan and a strategy to do that safely. Primarily, we've followed and adopted what the Fairgrounds Administration, Jeff Hines, has recommended. And in doing so, we're taking the arena and breaking it up into multiple venues, separating out cohorts of people. And that plan is being adopted by rodeos and other events throughout Oregon and the Northwest. Rodeos throughout the nation have looked at it. So we're pretty proud of that and excited to see something go and give something to the community to look forward to.
Yeah, so I hadn't thought about that. I've been involved with Lapine Rodeo for many years. So yeah, the cohort, so kind of the gate events on one end and full arena events kind of spread out, and then keeping those into groups so they're not even mixing up the contestant groups as much.
Correct.
Okay.
But also then the fans are separated into unique groups.
And then I think we've heard that they're basically kind of managing entrance or entry and exits, too, so it isn't just a one-door situation. Everybody's mixing it up at one entry. So there's multiple entries and exits for kind of the cohorts of fans and contestants, so.
We're dividing up parking areas to make it convenient. We have multiple entrances, and those people will not, and what a great facility to have and be able to walk around the whole mezzanine area. It's not going to happen this year.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to be, you know, kept in sections, and the contestants have quite a rigid standard on how they can proceed. We actually have extra PRCA officials to help with the COVID plan and compliance.
Well, that's, yeah, go ahead.
So will people who are coming for like multiple days of the event, will they be kind of co-horted up with the same people each day, or will it kind of mix from day to day?
I'll take that one. Specifically, they're not required to stay within unique groups. They have the option in purchasing tickets to move around, but naturally, people tend to, if I'm in Venue D, I'm going to stay in Venue D all three nights. And so we'll also see a number of people that come for one night, two nights, not necessarily all three.
Very exciting.
Oh, and it just, you know, the Cascade Shootout last September was an amazing venue, and watching it on the Cowboy Channel, seeing the national exposure of our lovely community was unbelievable. So the fact that you are going to be one of the first rodeos on the West Coast is amazing. I know it's a challenge. The good news is our positive cases went down to 148 this last week. They've been dropping, so hopefully by the end of March, we'll even be in a better spot for you. And, you know, it's great, though. Adding another night, I think, was wonderful for the Cowboys because last year was really pretty difficult for all of them, and our community has a lot of Cowboys. So thank you so much for coming today.
Well, and yeah, we have to do it in a respectful COVID environment at this point in time. And it sounds like, you know, the culture of rodeo and cowboy at this time is respecting it. So that's, you know, what the community would ask. That's what I would ask as a public health authority, but let's also celebrate our traditions and enjoy trying to get together with the restrictions that are appropriate. So.
Thank you for trying to maintain cultural and sporting events in our community through COVID and, you know, doing it in, you know, a time that's not, you know, not financially optimum, definitely, to operate an event, but being committed to providing those events to our community still.
If anyone is watching today, there is a partner information packet that I'm sure Dennis could share with you. If you would care to sponsor, help this rodeo make their fifth event a really success as much as we possibly can. So I'm sure they could get ahold of you, Dennis. I don't know. Do you want to give them your email or something?
Sponsorship opportunities available.
Absolutely. And it's really partnerships. We try to help our sponsors, our partners, as much as we can with exposure and things. So they can just email info@highdesertstampede.com, and we'll get it taken care of.
Great.
Well, thank you very much for joining us. As I say, it's really just kind of that sit-down, getting the word out, but also acknowledging that it is COVID times, and we're going to figure out how to do it in a culturally sensitive fashion, or whatever terminology needs to be right now. So thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Morris, thank you for sharing that your two kids are back in school. That's really great news.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Item number eight, Consideration of Board Signature for Fund Exchange Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation. Cody Smith.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department.
Good morning.
So Board before you this morning is in agreement with ODOT for Deschutes County to receive our Surface Transportation Block Grant Program funds for federal fiscal year 2020. This is an annual allocation of federal highway funds that we receive each year from ODOT. This allotment is our fiscal year, federal fiscal year 2020 funds. These funds were made available to ODOT early on in calendar year 2020. We, the Road Department, made a request to ODOT to receive these funds last summer, and we just finally received this grant here, this, excuse me, this agreement here in February of '21. So under the requirements for this program, the funds have to be assigned to a particular project or capital purchase. And there's a few different ways that we can do this. The first way we can do that is we can use these funds directly as an additional contribution to a federally funded project. We don't currently have a federally funded project in the Road Department that we can assign these funds to. Second is we can federalize one of our current CIP projects. So this would require us to keep those funds at ODOT and have ODOT deliver a project on our behalf or make a purchase on our behalf, following full federal oversight and federal requirements such as NEPA compliance, extensive reporting requirements, lots of other red tape. Or third, and the option that we, along with many other local agencies prefer, is we can exchange our federal allocation for state funds, basically making the funds identical to our annual state highway fund allocation monies that we receive. So ODOT puts an exchange rate on these funds when we opt to do that. So the current exchange rate for this method is 94 cents in state funds for every dollar of federal funds. The state funds we receive in exchange come from ODOT's state highway fund allocation, and then in exchange, ODOT would keep our federal fund allocation and use that on one of their projects or programs that already receives federal funds. So this is the preferred method, again, by most local agencies in Oregon, including us. Ultimately, it provides not only a time saving but also cost savings for project because it would reduce or completely eliminate many of the requirements to deliver a federally funded project through ODOT. We typically assign these funds to one or more of our pavement preservation projects each year because those projects are pretty simple and straightforward from an administrative standpoint. This year, we proposed to assign our Surface Transportation Block Grant Program funds to our paving of Fryrare Road project, which we, just a week or so ago, opened bids on, and we'll be awarding a contract for that soon. And the anticipated cost for that project is $1,494,741.50. Again, we do this, an agreement like this, every year for these funds. This is actually the last year that we'll need to do an agreement like this for these funds. ODOT's making some changes to this program so that moving forward, instead of every year entering into a new agreement and assigning the funds to a project, instead, we're going to just be entering into an agreement every ODOT STIP cycle. The STIP is the statewide transportation improvement plan. It's ODOT's capital improvement plan, and those are a three-year cycle. So from here forward, we're just going to enter into a single agreement every three years with ODOT. We don't have to assign these funds to a particular project or purchase. And once the agreement's executed, ODOT will just distribute those funds to us basically automatically. So this should be the last year we have to do this in this fashion. So with this agreement, the county would receive $726,440 in state highway funds in exchange for our $772,808 federal allocation. And again, those funds would be used for our paving of Fryrare Road project. With that, I'll turn it back over to the Board and answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Cody, just so I fully understand this. So when we exchange these funds, the restrictions to use the funds on a federal aid highway project go away? So, you know, I guess they don't go away, but the state is using those federal dollars on an eligible project, and then we have, the funds we get in return just have full flexibility? Is that?
That's correct. That's correct.
It's nice that we-
Again, with the caveat that presently, we have to assign them to a particular project or particular purchase.
It's nice that we have that kind of flexibility, or that we have that kind of setup and flexibility with the state.
So one question. You mentioned there's three options and to federalize a project. And it sounds like that's not a kind of a scenario that we would ever use, but what would that be, as in when we wouldn't federalize an existing county road, would we? Or what would that terminology mean? Just for my information.
Well, it would be, you know, it wouldn't be federalizing a road. It would be federalizing projects. So it'd be us delivering a project, basically using all the requirements for a federal aid project that are in the various federal regulations and federal highways guidelines and standards. So-
Yeah, it just doesn't happen.
The first part of that is that we, as far as federal highway projects, we, Deschutes County, cannot administer those. Those have to be administered by ODOT. So if we're talking about a project on our road system, it wouldn't be, you know, us delivering a project, either, you know, me with my group of staff designing and administering that project, or for bigger projects, we'd hire a consultant. Instead, it would be, everything would be going through ODOT. So it'd be, you know, ODOT overhead, ODOT administration, ODOT process for everything. So that in and of itself just starts racking up the cost on a project substantially. I mean, years ago, when this Fund Exchange Program first came to be, I mean, we had, we being the road officials, county road officials around the state, had kind of put some numbers together to put some cost of what it takes ODOT to deliver a project versus what it takes us to deliver a project. And I mean, it was somewhere in the order of 15% to 20% additional cost for ODOT to administer a project versus us to deliver our own projects in-house.
Yep. Okay. So it's a scenario that's out there, but it usually isn't going to make sense. Understood. Yep. Thank you very much.
No. So I mean, a scenario that would make more sense is if we were either had a federally funded project in our own system, such as a flat project, for example, a Federal Lands Access Program project, or if we were participating in a bigger ODOT project, which in coming years, we do have some projects like that we'll be participating in financially. Then we could just say, "ODOT, go ahead and use these funds for that project as part of our contribution to that project." But we don't have a scenario like that currently that works. So, and this, you know, we don't, we want to use these funds as they become available. The ODOT holding on to these funds isn't a very good savings account. They're not drawing interest. It's better for us to get our hands on these funds and use them as soon as we can. But, so again, for this go-around, our proposal is to use them, go through the fund exchange process, and then use these funds for our pavement preservation project on Fryrare Road.
Thank you very much.
You know, just for kind of long-term perspective, how, like, what percentage of years do we get to use the funds without, you know, or in the past, have we used the funds without having to exchange them, you know, on the kinds of eligible projects that you mentioned? Like, is it every other year or two-thirds of the years, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I have an answer ready for that question. The Fund Exchange Program's been in place, I want to say, at least six years now. So it's certainly my entire time here at Deschutes County, we've had that program in place. And my understanding is every year. That's the way we've administered and delivered that. Prior to my time here, I was the county engineer at Douglas County. We actually had some big federal projects that we were just using those funds to contribute directly to federal aid projects, but it's kind of been a different landscape lately, so.
But we do, in the next couple of years, there are federal projects that you do, you could picture us, you know, plowing these funds directly into.
We don't have any guarantee right now that we have any federally funded projects coming up. Really, the only one we have on the table right now is a flat project for a chip seal on Cassidy Lakes Highway, the segment from Elk Lake back to Mount Bachelor. But that's actually going to be a, what's the term I'm looking for? That's going to be a recent reimbursable agreement. So that's actually work we're going to deliver, and federal highways is going to reimburse us for it. So that wouldn't be a great fit for directly administering these funds to. But thinking ahead, I mean, we haven't entered into agreements yet with ODOT, but we do have a couple upcoming projects that will be, ODOT essentially will be delivering these federal projects that we'll be participating in, or that we anticipate participating in. Those include the Bend-North Corridor Project and also the Terrebonne Project. So there is some potential there. But again, this, you know, after this cycle, the way these funds are administered is changing a little bit, so we'll probably want to have a little more information before we make a decision like that, so.
Great. Good discussion. Thank you.
Okay, so Cody, Fryrare Road happens to be the road I travel on most days, and I'm hoping that this project will be two weeks. And losing those $46,000 that the state keeps, I guess when you're telling me that they usually cost 15% to 20% more, that's really a small loss if they were involved in this?
Yes. Yes. We and every other county and city would agree that that's, that administrative cost, at the current exchange rate right now, it's generally, it's not a loss to us. It's a savings because we're avoiding having to deliver a project through ODOT and meet all those much more stringent federal requirements.
Well, thank you so much. I just, let's get a date for it so I know, and I can loop around a different way for a couple weeks.
Yeah, and just as far as the project goes, so we haven't awarded that contract just yet. So once the contract's awarded, hopefully we'll have a schedule from our contractor, and we'll be letting everyone know what the schedule is on that project.
And that's also where our transfer station is, too. So-
One of the transport stations is out on-
The critical one for Sisters, for that end of the county. So we won't want to, it won't be done in May, will it?
The work might occur in May, and I don't have a schedule yet. I mean, theoretically, the work could start anytime the weather temperatures allow. So when we're getting pavement temperatures of 55 degrees or more, and the work has to be completed by the end of June, so.
Okay. Well, there's Fire Free in at Sisters at the transfer station. I think it's like the 15th or something for a couple of weeks. So that's, just remember those dates when you're booking it, please.
Yeah, definitely. We'll make sure we coordinate that and try not to have any impact to those operations, at least best we can. And certainly, yeah, try to avoid special events such as that.
Thank you so much.
Is there a motion?
I move. Go ahead.
I move that we approve document number 2021-166.
A second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Deere?
Yes.
And Chair of the House. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Cody.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Consideration of Proposal for Business System Support. Greg Mann.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So Agenda Packet, item number eight, or number nine, I should say, is on page 74 of your packet for reference. And for the record, my name is Greg Mann. I'm the county treasurer and chief financial officer. And the title of this agenda is a consideration of a proposal to add 1.0 Business Systems Support FTE in the FY '21 budget. In terms of background, we've gone over this, I've done this individually with each of you, but just for the public record, I'll just go ahead and give you a brief overview of the background and the proposal. So in 2016, fiscal 2016-17, we implemented a new accounting system effectively called Tyler Munis, and it was a significant departure from how we had done things prior to that. Our old system was called HTE, and it was a very non-transparent and completely centralized accounting-only system housed and supported in finance. Munis was a different approach. It came in, it's decentralized, and provided access to information to anyone that had system access, and gave them the ability to access details within a few clicks of the mouse, and allowed us to move from a centralized system, limited-access, paper-driven system, to a shared access system that added workflow and HR management component and employee self-service. Interestingly, we transitioned from a system that was accessible by a very few staff, and those were all located mostly, I think, in the finance department, to one Tyler Munis, which is currently used by over 400 staff as part of their daily work. At the time of the transition, there was very little expertise at the department level that would- at the department level that would, um, warrant a level required to provide support in terms of expertise. Uh, most people that were trained on a new system retained enough, uh, information to get by with their day, uh, to get their day-to-day work done, and there was little time for additional training to be able to harness the system. Uh, so the, the, uh, the thought there was that, um, uh, that the expertise level would be at the department level, spread countywide in terms of support. Uh, since then, we found that most support calls landed either in finance or IT because of the system knowledge, but, uh, neither of those departments had staffing adequate to provide support and training, consultation, and that sort of thing at the appropriate level for a countywide system the size of Munis. So last year, we began a conversation with some key system users and, uh, discussed ways to, uh, resolve that. And there was, at the time, there was an across-the-board agreement that the system was under-supported. Uh, just a couple of data points on that. Our technology director, Joe Sidoni, um, he mentioned during that process that new systems, particularly the size of Munis, would generally come with a, at least one new support FTE. And, um, as I mentioned before, we did not add any FTE with the system. And also point of reference, the city of Ben, which also uses, utilizes Tyler Munis, has 1.5 supportive FTE, and they're looking actually to add some. Additionally, our recent Munis audit, uh, provided by David Givens, uh, stated that additional resources might be necessary to help finance and IT maintain support and document system controls such as roles and workflows and reinforce segregation of duties. The group consensus from the, the super-users group is that needed more dedicated FTE support with business process expertise, a foundation, foundation in, uh, Munis, um, but a much broader umbrella to address business process as a whole, utilizing best practices and available tools. We have a funding plan for this position that would utilize existing fund balance, funds we already have, uh, that were contributed by departments to the Munis system implementation originally. This would take us the next two to three years. Once those funds are exhausted, the, um, costs to fund this position would be added through internal service fee charges, but there'd be no increase in ISFs for the next two to three years. The options were presented to all participating department heads for consideration, and we had nearly all departments supported the proposal to add the additional FTE and the funding plan. I also have a couple of folks here that are online, Eric Crop, Joe Sidoni, and Kathleen Hinman, who we really worked as a team together to formulate this proposal. So if there's any questions for them as well, they are online. Turn it back over to the board. Are there any questions?
So just a couple of observations. I can imagine that a, a, a subject matter expert, a person that really knows Munis, can help a department, uh, you know, just optimize a, a business process, but then that knowledge can be shared back through the organization. And that's probably what, you know, we don't have that opportunity right now. You know, if, if one, one group of, uh, people, one department really figures something out, and you know, all of a sudden there's a ten or twenty percent efficiency in processing, you know, invoices or whatever the, the, the topic is, then it can be pulled back and shared with other, or other parts of the organization. And I, I'm seeing that's the opportunity. And also the realization that this system really is, uh, you know, the business rules and permissions, you know, it's, it's very much, a lot of people can have access to it because all those business rules and permissions are built into the system, different than a, kind of the flat database accounting system in the past. So we, we could definitely grow into it still. So I'm excited that we've kind of come to this conclusion and, you know, I look for those efficiencies.
Yeah, uh, very good observations there, Commissioner.
So Greg, you said nearly all supported it, but how many didn't support it? I'm just curious. You don't have to give names.
Uh, we just, uh, we just had two, and they were primarily a couple of departments that, um, aren't heavy, uh, system users. They have their own systems, um, so they don't, they didn't, uh, I'm assuming they didn't find value in bringing on more support for something that they don't really feel like they need.
Understood, yeah. Uh, so, yeah, any other questions? I mean, it's kind of a high-level discussion at this point, but it is one FTE, and this would be a permanent position, generally funded for a few years out of the current, current pool of project funds, but then it will be calculated into the annual budget after that.
It, it sounds to me like when we, when we adopted Tyler Munis, uh, it would, you know, there was a need for this kind of support to really integrate it throughout the organization. So I'm, I'm glad that we're doing it now.
Any thoughts, Tom?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Commissioners. Um, I do support the additional position. Uh, wasn't, I came to that after a whole series of questions and, and discussion with Greg, as he knows very well. So I don't take adding positions lightly. Um, when we purchased, you know, as Commissioner Chang alluded to, purchased the system several years ago, there were frankly some unknowns as far as the, you know, what it could do for us and what it would take to support it. Um, after several years of experience, now we've kind of come to the conclusion that, you know, while it works, you know, probably adequately now as, as kind of a database for our, our financial and payroll information, we could do so much more with it if we had, you know, as Commissioner DeBonne mentioned, that, you know, sort of a, a departmental advocate who can work with each, uh, operational department to help maximize their flows, do financial analyses, and really use the system, uh, to do a lot more than we do now. So, um, it, uh, you know, I, I, as I said, support it. As, uh, you know, Commissioner Dare mentioned, you know, there will be, after two years, a financial impact on the departments who pay the interdepartmental rates to fund the entire, or the bulk of the finance department. So this would be included in that, but it's spread across many departments. So the incremental cost to each department is something that they bear, um, or would bear, uh, once it comes to that. But I believe the benefit is, far exceeds the financial cost of adopting this.
So today, it looks like we're looking for consensus support to put it back as an official FTE budget, uh, item in the future. So just confirming the, the business.
I mean, one last, one last question. Uh, so Greg, the, the, the two departments that, you know, aren't really major Munis users, are they also very large departments? I, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, we wouldn't want to match up, you know, you know, if, ideally, we wouldn't want to match up, you know, department that doesn't really need Munis a lot with, you know, a high cost to support Munis either.
So, so both of the departments use Munis just like everybody else does, pay payroll, to pay bills, and, uh, do those sorts of things. Um, they are both, uh, net funded out of the general fund, so the, that's where the impact would come from in the future. I, I don't know, I, I believe that some of the, um, concerns were just philosophical. They weren't our largest departments by, uh, by any stretch, but they were not our smallest either. Um, but the, uh, list of all the other departments was just overwhelmingly in support.
Great.
Sounds good.
So is there support for this item to be brought back for a formal resolution on a future meeting? It looks like we were all supportive. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll see you at a future meeting to add this FTE to the budget.
Great.
See you in a couple of minutes after COVID.
There you go. Yeah, then we'll see you again soon. Item number 10, uh, proposal for, uh, amendment to IGA with Oregon Health Authority supporting HIV early intervention and outreach services. Kathy Christensen, thank you for joining us. Here we go.
Hi, thank you for having us today. Um, for the record, I'm Kathy Christensen. I am a supervisor at Health Services in the Advancement and Protection Section. I oversee the STD, HIV, and adolescent health programs, and, um, currently in the ICS system, working with long-term care facilities and adult foster homes on outbreaks, testing, and giving, and their vaccines. So, and I have, um, good morning, I'm Jesse Kripstra, and I coordinate this regional, um, HIV grant that we're going to be talking about.
Great, thanks for joining us.
So, um, we're, this, um, our early intervention services and outreach grant, um, we are in our fourth year now of the grant. It's a five-year grant. So, um, every year, uh, it's, it, this is based on a calendar year. Every year, we come in with a new budget for the year. And so, um, our new, this is the amendment for our new budget for calendar year 2021. Um, a little overview, the early intervention services and outreach grant is, uh, through the Oregon Health Authority, and it helps support our, um, disease investigation and contact tracing for STDs and HIV, uh, gives us funding for outreach to vulnerable populations in all three counties. So we work with Jefferson and just, and Kirk Counties as well. Um, we also work with folks who are, um, HIV positive, who have fallen out of care, uh, to help get them back into care. We, uh, work with medical providers in the community, so, uh, provides a lot of really good services in our area for STD and HIV. And, um, we, uh, so this is just a continuation of these grant funds, uh, for the year.
Great, well, and what I think of is, uh, this is the other work we do other than COVID, right? I mean, so, uh, it's just amazing that COVID has taken over our world for a year, but these are the, kind of the standard things, you know, and it's still a, a population that needs some support, and there's other issues, uh, and, and topics also from the Health Department. So this is one of those things, kind of getting back to the basics and doing what we, we have been doing.
Yes, which we all look forward to.
Are, uh, do all counties receive, uh, funds from this program? Or are we, are, you know, are, are we one of a few?
So, I'll do all counties? I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing that.
Are, are, are all counties enrolled in this program? Are we one of, like, a select few?
Yeah, so it's mostly, um, counties with a little bit higher prevalence of HIV. Um, so we, um, kind of barely snuck in to be able to get, uh, funding for, um, we have an HIV prevention grant, and then we also, um, because we have that HIV prevention grant, we were able to get funding for EISO. So really, it's mostly, um, more of the metropolitan areas that are funded. Um, but we were also, because we were able to get funding, we could, we could actually, um, make it a tri-county-wide effort, um, so it would benefit all of Central Oregon versus just Deschutes County. But a lot of the smaller counties do not have this funding.
Kathy, what is our HIV, um, number for Deschutes County?
Yeah, sure. So, um, um, I'm currently unsure of our exact prevalence rate. I need to calculate that based on the most recent census data. However, I can tell you that, um, as of today, we have about a hundred and sixty-seven people living with HIV in Deschutes County. And, um, since, at least 2010, I didn't go back further, but in 2019, um, we had ten newly diagnosed, um, people living with HIV, which is, um, quite high for Deschutes County based on what we've seen. So we know that we have work to do.
Well, this, this kind of a, a program seems great, uh, in that you're, you're, you're trying to get to people early and do case investigation and contact tracing. We've all learned now how important that is through COVID to containing a, you know, containing a, a disease before it spreads too much within the population, so.
Yeah, and we do have some concerning trends. Um, we had, uh, even though a lot of diseases were down in 2020, we had a forty percent increase in gonorrhea cases. And already this year, we are double our cases for the month of January from last year. So we're really concerned about that and, uh, excited to get more focused back into this work.
Have you been, uh, uh, yeah, at what level have you been able to do your primary job, uh, while you've been, um, trying to work on, you know, engage in COVID response as well?
Um, I would say that I, in 2020, about seventy percent of my work was, um, COVID-focused. And even this grant even helped fund some of our work in COVID because our whole Advancement and Protections team was working COVID, um, for quite a while.
Thank you. Thank you for doing double duty.
Yeah.
And, and being able to prioritize also. So, yeah, is there a motion?
Actually, can I? I just wanted to say, um, I was on the Health Council, Central Oregon Health Council meeting last Thursday. Dr. Swanson gave a presentation, and I, um, was really, um, I guess, I could say surprised that the stimulant number for the state of Oregon and actually Deschutes County stimulant usage is higher than the average of the state, and it's got, and it's going up quite, uh, quite quickly. So anyway, I just wanted people to be aware that stimulants, which is such things as, um, Adderall and Ritalin, um, yes, apparently there's a lot of diagnosis out there of ADHD, and perhaps maybe not all of it is correctly being diagnosed. So, yes, stimulant usage in, um, Deschutes was really one of her, her, um, topics of her slideshow. So I don't know if you guys run into that in your field, but I just thought it was something that the public should be aware of, and, uh, definitely there are cases where people do need those drugs, but, um, they, they were quite concerned about it.
Yeah, so, um, as it relates to HIV specifically, what we see in Deschutes County, um, is about twen, a little over twenty percent of our, um, of our newly diagnosed folks in Deschutes County, um, their main risk factor, if you will, is IV drug use, and, um, specifically, um, most of the time are given methamphetamines. Um, but thank you for bringing that up, and it's certainly important to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
So I move Chair's signature of document number 2021-134, the amendment number three, to the IGA with Oregon Health Authority supporting HIV early intervention and outreach services.
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you for the discussion, and we'll get that IGA signed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
So at this time, we have a time-certain start at 10 o'clock or whenever health is ready, but, uh, we do have fifteen minutes available for other items or a slight break. Uh, just, and this is in just, uh, acknowledging that we do want to do a 10 o'clock start for, uh, uh, you know, multiple language, uh, presentation, Facebook Live, the whole COVID update, so.
I have an other item?
Yes, please.
I can, I can raise right now. The, our members of Congress are preparing right now for the fiscal year 22 appropriations season. So, um, soon they'll be sending out, uh, request forms that, uh, community, you know, key organizations within communities can fill out and send back to them, telling them basically what, uh, what federal programs are most important to their work, uh, so that our members of Congress can work on, you know, um, maintaining level or increased funding for those programs. So, um, knowing that we are in the middle of legislative, you know, our state legislative session, and that we've already kind of activated this system where we're getting our department heads together on a regular basis, I, I would love for us I, I would love for us to take some time during one of those meetings or set up an additional one where we could solicit from, uh, our, our, uh, our department heads, you know, what, what are the key federal programs in their minds so that we can submit some federal appropriations requests?
Okay, yeah, so that's, that's an ask to, you know, to take some time and do this. So one of my first thoughts is, uh, yeah, just kind of learning about that, just like you're saying, a survey of departments, but also, uh, you know, maybe even, uh, kind of the staff level appropriations, you know, what, what have we seen over the years that is the decision space? You know, because sometimes you can ask for something and it's,
Right.
it's either, oh yeah, we always do that or we've never heard of that before, you know, what are, what are the things?
And there are a few federal programs, you know, like specific, like, uh, like I know of a bunch of USDA programs that are, that are not set during the annual appropriation cycle. It's, they're like set during the farm bill and then there's, you know, there, there, there are some unique, uh, funding, you know, federal funding programs out there that, that it's helpful for to have someone tell you, this is subject to annual appropriations, this is not. Uh, one way we could do that item would be, uh, to tap Senator Merkley's field rep, lo, local, uh, BJ Westland, um, to come in, to come and speak with us about that, you know, give us a little bit of background. You know, Senator Merkley is a member of the Appropriations Committee and, and increasingly senior member of the Appropriations Committee. He was just, uh, appointed the Chair of the Natural Resources Subcommittee. So, you know, Ed will, Ed, for example, will be very excited about that. And, you know, we can talk about, you know, what, what, you know, hazardous fuels or timber programs we, we want to ask to be increased. But BJ would be a great person to kind of just walk us through the appropriations process overall.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, and then he could be engaged with our, our department heads so that they could ask him about, well, you know, you know, what was the level of funding for this specific roads program last year? And, you know, or the last five years and, you know, what can we expect for this year? And if we, if we ask for more, does it, you know, does it make a difference and things like that?
Well, and the difference between an appropriations discussion and, you know, when the transportation, when a transportation or infrastructure package, you know, just kind of understanding the, the different
Right, right.
tracks of, of decisions.
Right, yeah, because I mean, the, if, if we get an infrastructure bill, uh, this, this, this session of Congress, they'll set, uh, appropriations ceilings, but then it'll be up to the Appropriations Committee to actually deliver the money, um, for, you know, for those, uh, you know, those authorized appropriations, so.
Yeah, uh, well, so Commissioner Dare, you have any thoughts on that? I mean, so we're basically, we'd be looking for time and to take and do some learning and some, uh, coordination amongst our.
We could invite, and we could invite all three congressional staffers from, you know, our staffers from all three congressional offices in our delegation to, to join us for that.
That'd be an excellent idea.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so, uh, yeah, there's support for it, so we'll figure out what that might look like. You know, it sounds like something we're not going to do in a half hour or, you know, we're not going to sneak it in on the legislative, uh,
I don't think that would hurt.
eight to nine time, yeah.
I have it started at seven, if you want to do that, 7:00 AM.
Yeah.
If you want to sneak it in.
It would be great to have like a 45 minutes or an hour to do this. So, I mean, maybe if we could schedule a, a special session. Though the window to submit appropriations requests is probably, you know, the next six to eight weeks. So it, um, uh, it's, you know, it's not like we could just wait until our state legislative discussions are over and then do that, do it after that. It's, it is somewhat time-sensitive.
Yeah, well, that's fine. And then, uh, you know, I think of like our CCBHC at the federal level has been a big effort. As I say, transportation, roads, infrastructure is a big investment. So there, there may be some departments that it, you know, it's like they can lay it out real quick. This is what matters and this is why. And other departments and department heads that are like, no, there's nothing really, no action, you know, uh, in the domain. Any thoughts, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I think that's a great idea. We have a, a long history of receiving various kinds of federal money. Um, and because there are usually special requirements, strings attached, uh, to federal money, we track it separately. So there's this, uh, usually a separate line item in our departmental budgets for federal grants. So, uh, we'd be happy to compile a list of those various flavors of federal funds that come our way. A little table with kind of what it's used for. There's usually a name tied to it, so we can give you a little bit of history and compile that and, uh, uh, for discussion. Um, and as Commissioner Chang noted, there's, you know, the big enchilada is the infrastructure, uh, funding at the federal level. I'm not sure quite how that would work, but it'd be useful to get some information on whether that's going to be all channeled through the states or if there's any local appropriation that is tied to that and how that might work. Because it's obviously transportation funding, CIP is a critical aspect of what we do as a county. So we'll do that and maybe we'll look for a future board meeting that has perhaps a little lighter agenda that we can, uh, put this on there in the next week or two to, uh, to have that discussion.
Okay, and then we could, yeah, we could kind of cycle through. Instead of having all department heads there and just really cycle through, okay, let's talk. Because also I'm thinking, you know, District Attorney's Office, some of the grants, we, we get through that, you know, Public Safety. And then, you know, you mentioned USDA, so that's, uh, you know, one of those kind of, as I say, not a county service, but a, uh, something that I could sure follow, you know, this USDA certified, uh, uh, you know, meat production or inspection systems, uh, which is good for the economy, you know, uh, you know, relative to changing something in the economy, COVID times. So that's a kind of economic development opportunity instead of a direct county, uh, department ask. So yeah, maybe just a survey memo that can help us, just like, you know, we're already thinking, who else? Who else has got the direct, uh, federal connection or advocacy was going to be valuable? Because then you start to think of, uh, like our annual financial report, you know, there's a whole section in there about federal, federal grants. So you can almost start with the things we have received in the past, so.
And, and if you put together that kind of table that says, you know, here's the programs we've used, here's what we've used it for, that'll set us up for filling out the appropriations requests. Because, you know, that basically, that's what, that's some of the quest, the information they'll want is, you know, what's the program? What do you use it for? And then, you know, how much do you need it to be increased, so. So that, yeah, get, collecting that information would be great for structuring our discussion, but also it, it tees us right up to get these requests together and send them in.
Great, I like that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Still in?
Yes, since apparently we don't get the funding from the state that we are so entitled to, perhaps maybe, um, getting it from the federal government might be a different alternative.
Some of the COVID relief packages you're referring to?
Um, yes, yes. It would be so nice if they would come directly to Deschutes County.
Well, and I think we did send a note.
I think we did, didn't we?
Recently on that, yeah.
Yes.
So another, uh, other item is that next Thursday, we are doing a, um, leadership bend, Thursday at like 10:00 in the morning or something like that. So the, preparing a set of slides. I know Whitney's, uh, started that process. We just hadn't talked about it as a group. Uh, there's opportunity to feedback on kind of the structure, what we might be, uh, putting out there. And then also as a Board of Commissioners, you know, we'll get into the groove of, you know, what is a set of slides? When the three of us are presenting, you know, what a county does, uh, who we are, uh, and our current, you know, issues of the day or topics of the day. So, but that's for next Thursday. That'll be the first time, uh, you know, this current board with Commissioner Chang and joining us to be able to do that.
It's actually at 10:45.
Yeah, and it was in the morning sometime.
Yes, it's right after 10:00, so anyway, yes.
So just a reminder to feedback.
We'd really like to see that before, uh, yeah, next Thursday morning. Whitney?
Yeah, Whitney sent out, was it a draft presentation?
Yeah, just a starting outline, kind of the look in the field, because we can put anything in there. That's it, the Board of Commissioners, it's Deschutes County, um, yeah. So maybe next Monday, we have a, our regular meeting Monday, just kind of add it to the agenda for a discussion. And then maybe Monday and Wednesday if there's an update to it. So then this is where that, we used to have just a, kind of the work session upstairs, which is different than COVID times with the full video. But that's where you just kind of kick it around and say, what, what do we think we want on the slides? It was always a public meeting, but this is just a little different, you know, setting here.
People could watch, but it might be a little boring.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, but we'll, we can do that. Anything else?
Um, well, yesterday I did have my sisters, um, at go and it was a great meeting, what they're, you know, doing in the community. People seem to be, you know, up, they're, throw, they're opening up again. And, um, overall Sisters seems to be, um, they've got a couple businesses now that are just booming with, um, activities. So it's, it was a good meeting.
Well, uh, yeah, a couple of thoughts. So I just looked back on my schedule. So yesterday morning was Project Wildfire meeting. We had about 40-something people on a Zoom call, so they're well-attended. Boone Zimmerman and Ed Keith are doing a great job running that group, very engaged. Uh, there's a, uh, storyboard, which is kind of that scrolling website that talks about the history of fire in central Oregon, the, the neighborhood associations that are becoming fire-free, the opportunities to get more engaged and understand the big picture about fire in our community. Uh, so that, that's going to be finalized, kind of advertised to the world, uh, in the spring. So this is a February Project Wildfire meeting that, as I say, very engaged. Everybody, uh, is thinking of the spring, thinking of fuel reduction and what does it really mean? Also, there was the presentation of the Wildfire Mitigation Advisory Committee, uh, which is, uh, you know, what, if we did a, you know, accepting the, I think it was the R327 building codes or defensible space requirements in the rural, you know, what does that mean? So there's 40 more people thinking that through, so we're really getting a, a lot of people, uh, you know, having the brain space for that. So that'll be a, a choice of the commission at some point, too.
Well, I was really happy I was also on that call and happy to hear that so many contractors locally are actually implementing a lot of those really important changes. And as I've said to people that have older homes, please, um, update your venting, um, for your roof, because that's really critical. If you can do that small teeny screen, the 1/16 inch, it, it's got to be a very valuable change for your house. And, you know, that's something you can simp, you know, do simply, especially, let's say if you need a new roof, you could have that done at the same time. So put it together.
Yeah, so we, you know, we had a house built a couple of years ago, uh, moving out of a manufactured home. And we had that discussion about what, what is a, a fire-resistant, fire-resilient roof? And they said the new shingles are, are plenty good, you know, I mean, the, the fire rating on the, the asphalt singles that'll go on a roof are fire-resistant and withstand the ember storm. So it, it always just boils down to the needles in the gutters and the needles in the, the little hip inside corners of a, a roof that, that can be ignition or on the ground in the inside corner of a house. Just a few embers falling in there will start the wall on fire. But the construction of the house we're in is cement board. There's just, that's the right thing. Uh, so, yeah, I have, I've kind of come to that same conclusion.
It's so hard to nail anything into it, though. I mean, I was like, what is this? You know, trying to do my little design work.
But that was the standard. That's the standard product being used. It looks really good. It's got different textures. So, yeah, I mean, I'm kind of come to that same conclusion, too. If somebody could say otherwise, I don't see a lot of extra expense in, in, in new construction. So then there's a lot of, you know, older houses and remodel work.
Well, that, that screening though, that vent, it is so simple. And yet I know a brand-new house that burned to the ground once because it went in, the ember went into the attic. And so that, to me, is like something really simple that people, people could follow through and get that done.
And, yeah, those vents are made to have airflow in them, too. So on a hot day, it, it naturally, it has an inflow, so you just want ember can be sucked in. That's exactly it, so. Good. Uh, and then 911, uh, meeting yesterday was their, our 911, uh, uh, user board meeting. So that's the fire, uh, yeah, fire chiefs, police chiefs, sheriff and everybody. Uh, so nothing, no, not real news there, but it was a good meeting, uh, going down through, uh, you know, the, the radio project contract that we had signed here and, uh, you know, some of the protocols, uh, at 911 as a dispatch center that everybody agrees upon. So, yeah, no news is good news, I guess, in that, in that world.
That's what I'm saying, yes. They didn't have any record number of calls
Yeah, there was nothing, yeah.
in the last 30 days. Those, yes, those are the good things. Sarah's doing a great job. Thank you, Sarah. Sarah is, what have been the job for a while.
I mean, one, one committee assignment I'll, I could report back on is I, uh, I am engaging with the, uh, the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, and I think we got a plan for having staff coverage at, at the working group meetings and a, um, and I, I will continue to, to join them for their planning, uh, planning team, which is like their executive group.
Great.
Meetings on Fridays.
Wonderful. Okay, at this time, uh, item number 11, our COVID-19 update. This will be a Facebook Live broadcast also. So Nahad Sadrizodi and Dr. Conway.
Good morning.
Good morning, so.
Great pronunciation of my last name.
Oh, wonderful. I, I just, yeah, followed the words or the letters.
Great. Just checking, checking in with you about the streaming.
We got a thumbs up, okay.
Perfect. Okay, well, let me share my screen, please. Excellent. All right. Well, good morning. Thank you for inviting us. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadrizodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschute County Health Services. I'm joined by Dr. George Conway. He's the Director for Health Services. Let me start by thanking Jenny Faith for the data analysis, Morgan Emerson for the messaging. Many thanks to our, um, great staff at Health Services and community partners who are putting tremendous effort into vaccination rollout and other, uh, interventions related to this pandemic. Also, today I'd like to especially highlight, um, staff within Health Services who are the ones that I would consider are our unsung heroes. They are really holding the fort and they're not necessarily directly, uh, deployed to the response, but they're the ones who are backfilling, um, other colleagues who have been deployed. They're the ones who are taking on additional responsibilities and duties. And they're the ones who are, uh, doing all this extra work with, um, grace and compassion. So this is a shout-out to those colleagues. So we continue to see a downtrend in terms of new cases. This past week, we had 148 cases reported and frankly, this number could have been lower if it weren't for a, a local outbreak that is, um, included in these numbers. And Dr. Conway will speak more, uh, to that outbreak in, in a few slides. But the downward trend is still very positive. In turn, in terms of total number of cases as of yesterday, we have 5,746 cases reported as of, uh, March 11th last year. We also have unfortunately 57 or 56 deaths, uh, reported thus far. I will now go to the next slide. In terms of the demographics or age breakdown of the cases, we are, we're seeing, uh, seeing, uh, seeing a steady pattern. Um, still around 50, 55% of the cases are among, uh, young and mid-aged adults, so from their twenties until late forties. However, this past week, again, um, related to the outbreak that I mentioned, we did see an increasing number of cases in the adolescent age group of 10 to 19. Um, we're also seeing, uh, more of a, a similar pattern, um, from twenties to, uh, late eighties in terms of number of cases. Our testing capacity.
One observation, uh, just talking numbers. So we have a population of 200,000. Uh, we stepped back in the, uh, uh, the level from, uh, extreme to high by getting below 100 cases per thousand. And the observation is, is that we have 40-something, uh, cases in that 10 to 19 range, but we almost could get close to a, uh, what, uh, what is it, 50 cases per thousand, uh, 100,000 or something? You know, so that's just the observation of seeing these numbers, that we could even be close to the next step. Not that it's going to be next week, but in the next few weeks.
Yeah, that's a really good, I think, positive spin on all this, Commissioner, and, uh, and it's a reality. It's not just a spin, it's a reality. Uh, we did go below 200, uh, cases per 100,000, uh, for that two-week period, which did bring us from extreme high to high risk. To go from high risk to, uh, the next level, which is I believe moderate, I think that's, uh, we need, we need to go below 100, um, cases, uh, per 100,000. And that's the rate that I'm talking about.
Observing those numbers, yeah, 48, well, just happens to be a number from, uh, in a, of an event or, you know, a period of time.
Wait, Nahad, did you just say to get to, to get to moderate, we only need to get below 100 cases per 100,000?
That's my understanding, yes, Commissioner. I believe that 100 is the next threshold. Let me, I can double-check on that, but that's my understanding.
I think we're at 100. With 200 cases and a population of 200,000, we're at 100 per 100,000.
So what, yeah, so what we do is add the number of cases in, like, uh, week one with the number of cases in week two and, uh, divided by our total population and get a rate. Multiply by 100,000, we get a rate at that point.
So you're referring to a two-week rate?
It's two, two weeks to go down.
Yep, yep.
It's a week, yes, yeah.
Okay, so we've got to go down. That's the whole. That's our tracking. We are going down. We've gone down from 406 significantly.
We are. That is definitely good news and it's uplifting, uh, and it's really cause and effect here, right? It's, it's the choices that we make, the decisions that we make that, um, have an impact on what happens in terms of this, uh, virus circulating in our community. So the choices we've made as communities in Deschute County have really helped bring these numbers down from a peak of, well, peak of 450, uh, 454, but 406 just, uh, three, four, uh, four or five weeks ago. Um, so it's not by accident. So it's not by accident, yeah, it's under our control. Our behaviors are under our control and the choices we make. In terms of testing capacity, we remain steady. The last four to six weeks, we are seeing between three to four thousand tests being done. A proportion of these are, probably majority of these tests are being done on symptomatic patients, and there is a proportion that's being done on asymptomatic based on some routine testing or maybe elective surgery, prior to elective surgery, someone being tested or prior to traveling. We don't have clarity necessarily what that proportion looks like. Our team is looking into this. There is no database or data system that really collects this information in a user-friendly way, and that's part of the, I think, challenge we are facing, and this pandemic has shown that having a strong database, state level, county level or what have you, local level is really important as we move forward. Nevertheless, we are seeing a positivity rate vastly between three to four percent, which is very, it's very good. It's very good news to be below five percent. But this is our, this is a regional indicator. It's based on hospital admissions within the St. Charles Medical System. It comprises three counties, Crook, Jefferson, and here at Deschutes, and it speaks to basically an important red line that we don't want to cross, which is around hospital capacity. We are seeing a steady fall in terms of hospital admissions, which is very positive. I think this morning there were sixteen admissions, nine of which are from Deschutes County. And just a shout out to our medical providers, all the medical providers in Deschutes County, but especially our St. Charles colleagues who are doing a remarkable job in taking care of patients and helping them with their recovery. I think my last slide before giving the floor to Dr. Conway, this slide changes every two weeks, so this slide should be similar to the one I presented maybe last week, or maybe I didn't have it yet by last week. It does show that Deschutes County is in orange. It's in high-risk level category because of the drop in cases that we saw. That's very positive, and we still have some company in that regard, and if we continue with the choices that we're making and the numbers continue to go down, certainly we're not, it's not far-fetched for us in a few weeks, maybe in a month or so, to be in the moderate level. So with that, I give the floor, unless there are any questions, I give the floor to Dr. Conway.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matter of record, George Conway, Health Services Director. So I'm going to start with a brief, very brief synopsis of an outbreak that we have ongoing that we're working on. There have been a total number, and this was as of yesterday, I think there may have been one added as well, students that have tested positive for COVID in the last week and a half is forty-two, and the total number of students who tested positive had attended a party the weekend, one of the parties the weekend of the fifth or the seventh, the seventh was Super Bowl Sunday, was thirty-six. A testing event for those who may have been exposed or might have been exposed to the virus was put on by our ICS and department on the twelfth, on Friday, with over two hundred tests administered. At this time, there are four high schools in the Ben Lepine School District that have had at least one positive case, include Summit High, Mountain View High, Ben High School, Skyline High School, which I think may actually typically be spelled with one word, and there are three students from high schools that are not reflected in the graph. I'll show you in a moment. And then there are second-generation cases and friends and family also being seen now. Next slide, please. The principal risk factor was having attended a party. The majority, the great majority of these folks attended one very large party that was on the sixth, and our understanding from interviews is that there was not, shall I say, great adherence to social distancing, et cetera. I should point out that this wasn't, if you will, a flagrant personal irresponsibility. None of the students who ended up being infected per COVID testing were symptomatic at the time that they attended the party. So this was, these were, appeared to have been asymptomatic transmission in those instances. Next slide, please. So these things will be basically reminders. First of all, we know that there are many asymptomatic persons that can become involved in such outbreaks, both the inception of them as well as being infected and they're not symptomatic. The biggest risk is that those individuals, the asymptomatic ones in particular, if they haven't been tested yet and it's not, hasn't been brought to your attention, is that they could bring, the teens typically are not a high-risk group for complications and serious health events related to COVID infection, unless they may have some underlying medical susceptibility. So the big concern here is that those individuals could bring home COVID-19 unwittingly and infect an elder, layer medically fragile family member who could then become very ill. We're asking that teens that have been to these parties or have had contact with people that have been named as cases or that they know were at the parties, take advantage of public testing events. We're hoping to have another announcement on that the next day or so. And then also in the interim, to maintain social distance, mask up while we continue to vaccinate our population. Sorry for the typo. There shouldn't be a D there. Next slide, please. So this is our Venn diagrams for risk, and the things that increase risk are no masks worn, indoor space, crowded place, hot spots. So that's what we believe is a reasonable descriptor for the parties that were implicated in these transmissions. And then things that decrease risk are wearing masks outdoors and maintaining a social distance of at least six feet. Next slide, please.
Dr. Conway, before we leave off this outbreak in the, among the high school population, I do have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. So six of these, six of these forty-two cases did not report attending a party. Are they, and I've read in the newspaper that, you know, there, we at least don't suspect right now that the, that COVID was transmitted inside the school, you know, during school. So...
But we don't, we don't, actually, we don't know. We, we're not aware of any documented transmission inside the schools, but we're also, we haven't been able to work our way back the way that we would like to, to an index or a single source case, so we don't know whether this, whether the individuals that acquired COVID in a day or two following the party and showed up positive at the end of the week. We don't know if they acquired that in the party. We don't know if the people that were symptomatic, and then surely some of the people that were symptomatic the day after the party acquired COVID elsewhere, and there was more than one of those. We don't have, we don't have a sort of a causal chain that links back to a particular individual. Likewise, we haven't tested the entirety of the student bodies, so we're not really aware whether or not there may be secondary cases that have occurred in the schools. We do understand that the schools are taking precautions, the school, the index school was closed after, after this was unearthed late last week.
Right, right. And the other thing I, I mean, I don't, if you, if you haven't kind of completed the whole causal chain, it may be hard to answer this, but I'm curious, you know, a party where there's, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, you know, however many kids, do you have any sense of how many, how many kids walked into that party infected and were, you know, like, were able to multiply those cases to, you know, thirty-six? Like, is it, is it one, is it, you know, one asymptomatic infected kid that walks into that party and infects all those other people, or is it a couple, or?
Well, it's unknown. There, there could have been one, and, you know, there have been super-spreader events, but the most likely thing is that there were a number, a number of these young people were infected at the time, were not aware of it, and they were, you know, they were just partying with others. From epidemiologists' viewpoint, it would be handy to have somebody, you know, interviewing people as they arrive at all such events with a clipboard and recording things, but it doesn't happen, and teens aren't necessarily inclined to share a lot of information about whatever social event. So we don't, we really don't know, and it's unlikely that we'll be able to sort out the real genesis of this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an understanding of, when you have a super-spreader event, you know, what kind of a multiplier can one case have?
Oh, it depends. It depends on a variety of things. Some people can, there have been asymptomatic people that have had exhalations detected, I think, at ten to the month, so ten million viruses per exhalation. That would be far above average, but if you have a confined space and you have a lot of, a lot of the people interacting, it's possible that this could happen from one person, but we know that there were multiple people that became symptomatic in the following day or two, so, but by definition, those folks did have, did have the infection at the time of the party.
Thank you.
Dr. Conway, I was aware of a party last July fourth. It was an outdoor barbecue. Fifty people were at the party, and twenty-five of them tested positive for COVID. So that was an outdoor party months ago. It wasn't here, so we don't have to trace it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and actually, being, and once again, being outdoors, if you're not maintaining social distance, et cetera, it may not be a guarantee either. Shall we move on? Okay, so this is our vaccination data. We continue to do, we've had limited supply chain last few weeks, but we had very good momentum initially, which is still carrying us, is having a relatively high vaccination rate within the state. We have sixteen thousand six hundred individuals that are currently have vaccinations, series in progress, so they've had their first dose. We have about thirteen thousand, almost four hundred that are fully vaccinated, so a total of about thirty thousand individuals have been, have been either started or fully vaccinated in the county, and that gives us a rate of about fifteen percent. Next slide, please.
So does that include physicians that are giving, internists that are giving the shot, and the veterans? I know my husband got his shot, and he was thrilled.
So the, the answer is different for those two. Physicians' offices that are, that have administered these in what we call distributed model for the OHA originating or throughput doses would be recorded in S. This is, the denominator here is that this is people that have been recorded in ALERT, which is the state's tracking system. So all the Moderna and Pfizer's doses that come through the state do get recorded there. The doses coming through the federal pharmacy program for direct vaccination at long-term care facilities are not enumerated in S, nor is the Veterans Administration's supply chain, nor is the Indian Health Service supply chain. So there are other individuals, and we're actually, we're asking to, we're trying to get that data and figure out a way to traffic, track in a real time, so we have a more informed population estimate. One of the reasons that's important is we know that there were a number of oxygenarians, eighty and above, and probably septicogenarians as well, seventy and above, that were vaccinated in the long-term care facilities, but not knowing that number, we're not able to make an informed estimate of our vaccination coverage. The same thing for veterans. We know that the last intercental estimate, I saw there were over sixteen thousand veterans in Deschutes County, and we don't have any idea of how many of those have been vaccinated through the, through the Veterans Administration. So this slide is just a graphic with our aspirational goal of eighty percent of eligible population, which is one of the most commonly used, upper-bound, desired level vaccination for effective herd immunity, and you can see that we're working our way toward that, I'd say quite effectively. And a lot of the progress to be made in the future is going to be dependent upon vaccine chain. We have a little more surety and a little more volume coming in, but nothing like what we need to be, be able to rapidly vaccinate the population and nothing like the volume that we did a few weeks ago when we had a better supply chain. Next slide, please. So this week, we have thirteen hundred first-dose vaccines, and the, we're moving down in age. Individuals seventy-five years and older are eligible per OHA criteria, and then people that remain eligible, if they haven't been, been able to get it previously, or if they were waiting because they were ill, or if they've changed their mind, that are in Phase 1A, healthcare workers, Phase B, Group 1 educators can still be vaccinated at this time. Vaccination allocation remains week to week, but we're hoping to get something a little more stable the next, the next few weeks, and people can visit, are invited and encouraged to visit www.deshutes.org/covid19vaccine to stay up to date. Next slide, please. This week, first-dose vaccines are being provided by appointment only at the Deschutes County Fair and Expo Center, a mass vaccine clinic. There are one hundred persons appointed to receive vaccine last week at Lepine Senior Center. I think it was supposed to be Friday, so on the kind of weather that's been delayed, and I understand it's occurring this week. And then there were one hundred, there are one hundred appointments scheduled through Mosaic Medical, and there are no additional appointments available currently there. Next slide. So residents can stay up to date on vaccine availability and eligibility. Those who've filled out a form, they can go into vaccine.deshutes.org, fill in a very brief questionnaire, and that will register you as interested, and you'll get push messages about eligibility, and also you may, you may receive an invitation to go ahead and make an appointment, and that's online at www.deshutes.org/covid19. And then there's press releases and social media as well. Next slide.
Dr. Conway, don't forget, if you do have an internist, and that internist did immediately fill out the application form, they will have vaccinations available for you, so you honestly might want to check with your internist and find out if you can get on their schedule.
Yes, well, we had, we have had, we did a distributed model, I think it was last week, as a trial, and the number of clinics that decided to proceed with that was quite limited. I think there were four or five, so, so I don't think it would hurt to check with your doctor's office, but if, if you don't find it there, I would strongly suggest that you register in S, since this is a pooled, this is pooled information that all, all the vaccination supply chain is being, is being allocated through. So once again, you can fill out your vaccine interest form, vaccine.deshutes.org, but there is an accommodation, if you don't have internet, if you don't feel comfortable doing something like this on a cell phone because of privacy or whatever, you can also just call our COVID hotline, five four one six nine nine five one zero nine, and we'll be very happy to assist you in, in, in rolling. Next slide, please. So this is where we are on all of the people in the Phase 1As. This is very broadly defined, healthcare workers, people who are providing services to other individuals, even as family caregivers of people that are disabled or chronically ill. And then we're also including all educators in Group 1 and 1B, people eighty and over, which is the Group 2, and now we're working our way down through Group 3, which is seventy-five year and older, and that, that's the eligibility this week. Starting on Monday, the eligibility will extend down to seventy, and a week later on March first, down to sixty-five. Now, I have to point out that there are large numbers of people, especially as you get down to the, if you will, the younger elders between, say, sixty-five and seventy or seventy-five, so it's going to take quite a while at the current supply volume through supply chain to vaccinate those. So while that eligibility will occur each week successively, it could take up to, say, six weeks or even a couple of months to vaccinate all those unless our, unless our supply chain becomes more robust. our supply chain becomes more robust. There is some hope for that in a number of ways. There's been some efficiencies being worked on for the two current approved vaccine, vaccines, Pfizer and Moderna. And then the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is a single dose vaccine that doesn't have to be as carefully handled as far as cold chain, et cetera, is undergoing its emergency use authorization, initial review by the Food and Drug Administration next week. So there is a possibility and they apparently have a large amount of doses already in inventory. So it's possible that there would be a relatively large scale release to some of those doses in sometime in March. That's all I have.
Commissioners, before giving you the floor, Dr. Conway, if it's okay, I just want to share two messages from my perspective, if you allow me. One is around, is around the fact, you know, and it's a fact because we hear it and we talk to people. We know people are getting fatigued and they're tired. Cases are also going down, so it's easy to put our guards down. And the way frankly, I look at this situation right now is that for almost a year, majority of us have been fortunate to sidestep this transmission, this virus, escape this disease. And, and some of that, a small percentage of it is probably luck and a big percentage of it is because of the choices we're making. With that hopeful message from Dr. Conway around more vaccines coming into the market and the supply chain increasing, really the way I look at it is that if until now I've been able to sidestep this or escape this virus and disease, I only have probably another couple of months before having access to vaccines and before interrupting the transmission. And I think a couple of more months of keeping our guards up and making the right choices and wearing our masks and physical distancing. I mean, the way I walk around the community, I assume everyone around me has COVID. That's just the assumption I make. And based on that, I make choices. So I think one message is around, we only got a couple of more months. I'm hopeful more vaccines are coming in. We're going to start increasing the vaccination coverage and we're going to interrupt the transmission. And then the other message is really around what Commissioner Chang raised, a great question around, you know, do we know how many people were maybe carrying this virus when they went into this party or not? And the answer, as Dr. Conway says, we don't know really how many. But the fact is that it only takes one person to come in who is asymptomatic, who could be in the right circumstance in terms of viral load and transmission and spread this virus to everyone. We know the average spread is around what we call R0 is around two or three, but that's just an average. We know that there are people who transmit it and infect others upwards of maybe 20. And there are some who don't infect others, even if they are infected. So it takes one person to come in. So if we're making a choice to gather together in confined settings and, and interact with one another, we should also keep in mind that it could be a one person who's asymptomatic, who could give this virus to dozens of people in a setting. So thank you. With that, I give you the floor. Or Commissioner, Dr. Conway, did you want to add anything else?
I, I do have a question. I thought originally you had said that we needed to have 108,000 vaccinated in Deschutes County for herd immunity because you're taking out the kids. And, but now it seems like you've raised it to like 122,000 is what your target is?
Yes. The ICS initial planning model was using 70%. And that was based on, at that time, Inspector Commander Garabey's estimate of likely vaccine acceptance. However, since then, CDC and NIH's recommendations have been centered around 75 to 80%. So we're using the upper bound of that, which is 80%. So yes, you're right. The initial calculations were based on a total denominator of 108, which was 70% of the adult population. And we have since updated that a few weeks ago to be 80%, which is whatever it is, 120, 122,000.
Looks like 122,000.
Yes.
So we've got a ways to go then.
Yes. And it's, and it's, we're, we, we stand ready. We've, we've shown the capability. We can push, we believe, between 25,000 and 30,000 doses per week using our mass vaccination model. And we can actually push it to, to 30 by doing a mixed distributive and, and mass vacs model as well. So we, we stand ready to do, move very, very quickly as soon as the supply chain improves.
Well, we, this week, per my letter from Leah Horner, we were getting 4,600 vaccinations between Health Services and Safeway. And Multnomah County was getting 40,000. So we're still, the numbers aren't coming out of Salem fairly. And I, of course, now they've got other problems on top of that. So yeah, we should be getting more than 4,600, especially when you consider we're vaccinating for Coric and Jefferson County too, which adds a gross population of like, I think it's 50,000. So we definitely need more numbers here.
That's a perfect setup for my question.
There you go.
Which is, we've seen, you know, we have seen large amounts of vaccine going to certain parts of the state. The explanation that I have heard is, you know, essentially they were doing catch-up. Like we, we were, we got it, you know, we, we built our capacity early, we got out ahead, and other communities had to catch up in terms of their, you know, phase 1A and, and 1B populations to where we, we, we were. And so I guess my, my question is, how caught up are they at this point, after a couple of weeks of like, you know, heavy concentrated doses in some other parts of the state? And, you know, when, or when will they catch up so that we can, we can see more kind of even spread of, of vaccine doses coming into the state in, in future weeks?
Sure. Well, the state has a, I, I can send it. I don't know that I could readily find it at this moment. But this was shared that the, at the weekly vaccine allocation meeting with OHA last week, which, which happens 20 minutes from now for this week. What they're doing is there's, the majority of vaccine now is being allocated based on the age stratum that we're in, based on a population calculation of the number of people in that age stratum. So that's the majority. And then there continue to be some counties are still trying to get their phase 1A healthcare workers and educators vaccinated. So that, that's still a second stratum that is being allocated selectively for the counties that are behind. And then there's, there's three other strata. There's a, one for mass vaccinations, and that's particularly focused on the Salem fairgrounds. But there's also a set aside for other counties that have proven a capability of mass vaccinations. And we are taking advantage of that. So we do have an additional allocation for that. And then there's two small, two smaller bands, one of which is for equity and the other is, is discretionary. So, so there are still counties, particularly around the metro area, that are still striving to finish the 1A and, and the 1B1. So the, the most, the educators and barely able to touch older people yet. And then there are a number of counties that are, that are ahead of that. As we go forward, the allocation for the age strata, and as we work our way through the age strata, and whatever comes after that, are intended to be done based on a population basis. So there's some catch-ups still going on. But the principal problem with this new model where we're going to have a more predictable allocation for, say, three weeks in a row, the principal problem is it just is not enough vaccine to fulfill the, the capabilities.
That, that first strata that you talked about, the, you know, the age eligible, eligible population, I, I feel like we have, you know, we have a substantial senior and retiree population in Deschutes County. So does that position us well to, you know, within that, within that stratum, does that position us well to, to receive allocations, assuming that the supply is, is available?
Yeah, it's proportionate and fair. So once again, as they catch up, as there, there's two aspects. As, as the counties that are still, if you will, struggling to reach the earlier strata catch up, then the way that the age bands will be allocated are strictly based on population distribution. So ours is proportionate to the population of each of those age strata. And then the other is that there's a separate set aside for mass vaccinations at sort of the minimum threshold of what it's necessary to maintain that capability. And we were fortunate that we did demonstrate this a few weeks ago. So we, we are eligible for that as well. Not sure what happened here. There we go.
I had another question or two. One was about the presentation of the data. At this point, we have been at vaccination for enough weeks that I, I was thinking it might actually be interesting to, to plot it out by time, you know, the, the, the amount of people who've been vaccinated and, and, or, you know, like another time series would be the amount of vaccines that we've gotten per week, you know, showing it building towards our 120,000 over, you know, you know, over the long, you know, over the foreseeable future. But to be able to, you know, Commissioner Dyer was, you know, kind of talking, you know, sharing that story of, you know, we built our capacity early. And it, you know, to some people, it might almost feel like we're being, you know, penalized at this point because, you know, we, we were, we built the capacity to, to vaccinate lots of people early. But having a time series like that would sort of, would help us, you know, kind of tell the story of, you know, yes, we built capacity early. We are ready. You know, these early weeks demonstrate, you know, how much vaccine we could be getting into, into people's arms on a weekly basis if, if it, if the supply was available or, you know, and it's, you know, the week that we, you know, vaccinated 9,000 people at the, at the, at the fairgrounds. I mean, that wasn't even, that wasn't even our full potential yet. So having a, you know, having a kind of visual like that could be helpful for, you know, helpful for our efforts to, to, to push for increased supply.
Sure, we can do that. The slope, the slope would have been very sharp a few weeks ago and it's, it's been much gentler since then.
Right. Right. And, 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 you know, that, that, that tells a story and it invites certain questions that, you know, are, are helpful for us to, to ask.
Right. Well, we're, this is a very complicated public policy issue. And we're, we're happy to provide that, that graphic. That'd be helpful. I don't think it should be very difficult to construct that. We can use, there's various dashboards. I do want to point out though, that once again, we don't have the inputs that come through the federal pharmacy program. It doesn't affect Deschutes much, certainly for Jefferson County, those coming through the Indian Health Service. And then the third is the Veterans Administration. We are, we are trying to get that information. I will repeat my request through OHA today to, to try to get that. So far, they haven't been able to get it either.
And someday, someday when we're getting that data, we can layer that on. That would be, that'll also help.
Yeah, we will be able to layer that. But also that will help us see what our coverage rate is per stratum.
Right, right. Great. Thank you.
So one question, we were talking about kind of, excuse me, the scope and scale of what is COVID? And yesterday you had provided a little bit of information about, you know, flu, flu deaths traditionally been between 10 and maybe 60,000 annually, United States of America. And this is just a reference point, just trying to get a, you know, my head around a reference point. In 2019, my understanding, it's 22,000 deaths for flu. So nationally. And so then the big number we see on the TV or, you know, just national number is about 488,000, almost 500,000 in a 12-month period. So that, that helps me understand that we're talking 10 to 60 variable flu deaths over the last, you know, X amount of years, 10 years or 20 years, whatever it was, and, and 500,000. You know, so it, it really is that, that 10 to 20X of what we've seen in the flu deaths in the United States. So that really helps me put COVID in, in kind of a, a scope, you know, the seriousness of what we're dealing with here, you know, instead of, you know, that, that smaller number that we kind of got to know for flus, it, it's bigger. It's a half a million nationally. So does that sound, I see some nodding heads, just as a reference point for me and for the community to understand that's the scope of what we're dealing with.
Sure. And I think, I think, thank you, Commissioner. I think the best summary would, it's about a 20-fold difference. There is some good news on this front though, which is that flu influenza-like illness, non-COVID influenza-like illness, or flu surveillance shows that the incidence of influenza has been quite low this year and deaths have been quite low this year. And it's a tribute to two things. One, there was, there were a lot of people that electively got flu shots in addition to waiting for their COVID vaccine. And the other is people being masked and covered may have reduced the transmission of influenza as well. Probably did.
Well, yeah, that, I was going to say that. Yeah. It's because I've been washing my hands and wearing a mask. Yeah.
You worked before.
No, I'm joking. Well, but wearing a mask, I mean, that's, you know, that's a societal change. I remember, you know, about a year ago now, I thought, oh, okay, I'll put a mask on when I think I should. And then you think, well, when should I? And then you're like, am I really going to walk into a store with a mask on? And now it's, you feel awkward without a mask, which is culturally good at this point in time.
I, I do have a question. Dr. Conway, what is the population total number of residents that live in long-term care facilities in Deschutes County? Then I believe we have, what, 24 of them? And I know there was an issue with them getting vaccinated. It was a separate contract outside of Deschutes County. I believe they've gotten their first vaccination. Don't we have a number on the, the number of residents those facilities are licensed for?
We, we do have that. I don't have it in front of me. We, go ahead.
Yeah, for the tri-county is 3,300, if I remember correctly. A vast majority of them are obviously from Deschutes County. Probably around 3,000 of them are from Deschutes County.
So you think 3,000?
But I'm, in the meantime, going to verify those numbers.
Okay. Cause I know my mother, who's in Yumitila County, has already gotten both of her vaccinations. So they've actually, yeah, she got it a couple of weeks before, I think they were vaccinating here, the first one.
We did check with the, all the long-term care facilities and maybe two weeks ago and two or three weeks ago. And there were, I think there were six that had not had much vaccine. Four of those assured us that they had it scheduled to come through the federal pharmacy program. And we did outreach to assure that the other two would be vaccinated.
I know February 7th, that was a Sunday, one of them was being vaccinated. So those wouldn't even be eligible for their second shot yet, I don't believe. So.
Correct.
Anyway, okay. So hopefully we can add another 3,000 to our number.
Right. But the, the, the issue is that the, what we're trying to look at is by those age stratas. So, so we'll need to find out that the age distribution of those and whether or not the federal pharmacy program will have that, or if we'll have to go back and, and reconstruct that.
Okay. Thank you very much for this week's update. Very valuable information.
Thanks very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Nahad.
Item number 12.
She texts me at like 6:00 this morning, I think.
Yeah.
He's always checking to make sure that I'm up.
There you go. So the next item, pandemic financial assistance update. Greg Munn can come back and join us. Do we see Greg Munn on Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, she'll be next. Okay. There's a lot of power in that control station back there, huh?
Yeah. Here I am. Hang on.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
There we go. Okay. Back again. Just to give you a quick update on the pandemic funding situation. Again, Greg Munn, county treasurer and CFO. Just a brief update today. The focus on, on funding really right now is on funding vaccine center. And we, 100% of these costs will be funded through FEMA and it's for a And we, 100% of these costs will be funded through FEMA and it's for a 90-day project period that starts January 21. There'll always be the option for another project period that happens after April 21, but they're taking it on a project-by-project basis. So there are two reimbursement methods. One is after the fact, that we'd all be used to where we spend eligible costs and then claim reimbursement. And the other is an expedited method, which we submit to them the total estimated cost for the 90-day window and they upfront send us 50% of that within 30 days. Their, their proposed, or their preferred, preferred method is that we do that upfront, we receive 50% and then have a true-up period after the project is completed. So right now, we're working on that cost estimate to get to FEMA. And there's a lot of staff, as you can imagine, that are involved in this and lots of fingers that go out there. So we're trying to make sure we collect as much as we can, although we know it's an estimate, we want to be as close to what we think is 100% before we submit. Also working with FEMA is to make sure that we are collecting our cost information and our data correctly so that when it comes time to true-up, we'll have actual documentation in the proper order. There's some pretty strict guidelines around that, but we'll have that all in order so that when, it'll minimize the amount of work when we come back to true-up, say in late April or in May. We've also been working with other local emergency response organizations, fire departments, for example, and who are also participating in distribution of vaccines. And right now, it appears that most of these municipalities in the county will be going directly to FEMA, but we've left that open as an option in case some of these have not, have an application and we can always work so that they can go through the county as well. And number five, there's no update on state sources for potential broad-based response funding at this point. The focus, even at the state level, appears to be on vaccine centers, which is directly supported by the federal government through FEMA. But our legislative folks, lobbyists have been super helpful and they, I get an email weekly from Phil, who's been, who lets me know what's going on at the, at the state at OHA or at the E-Board in terms of anything more specific about distribution of those funds. That's my update today. Any questions?
No questions. So yeah, it's kind of, thank you very much for that information. It's good to know that it's a 90-day project period FEMA, you know, kind of the scope of what we're doing and how, what the cycles will be. And I can imagine in the, at some point, it's just going to pop, federal government will make some choices, there'll be some different money on the horizon, we'll be able to, you know, get something out the, out the door if we can. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Greg.
Now, HR will be the next one. Item number 13, FF-CRA leave and temporary leave policy discussion.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. This is Kathleen Hindman, HR Director. Appreciate not having to give the financial update.
We were on the hot seat for a moment.
Yeah, not prepared for that one. Okay, so what we have here is the FF-CRA, so the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. There's a long, long title there. So as we know, it sunsetted effective December 31 of 2020 and it is optional at this point with no ability for reimbursement. And the board discussed, or, or, you know, considered the extension concept earlier, asked to bring it back. And so here we are. Couple, we were hoping that there would be more information from the, the federal bill that includes, that, its current form includes an extension, a mandatory extension of that FF-CRA, but it hasn't moved significantly yet, so we don't have an update on, on what that will look like or how it will impact us. A little bit of information, we continue to check in with our partners locally and our comparable counties. And we learned a little bit of information, our comparable counties continue to, you know, as we reported last time, most have not extended the FF-CRA voluntarily. Locally, some of our public sector partner agencies, and I would say that they're typically maybe the smaller agencies who saw little to no use of the FF-CRA originally, have chose to extend a, just the portion that allows for two weeks of sick leave should someone have COVID symptoms or need to care for someone with COVID symptoms. And I would say that's all but City of Bend. And it was an interesting conversation that we had. Most people are not seeing utilization even of that extension at this point, but have just made that additional bank available. When we, part of the conversation was organizations did analysis of their, of, you know, balances that are available or their leave balances that are available for existing staff. And, you know, City of Bend, as well as Deschutes County, most of our, many of our employees have, you know, significant leave balances available. And so, you know, that's a major factor in, I think, considering, you know, where we go from here. So, you know, that's kind of really the only big update. I do have some details in terms of, you know, we've checked in on the leave utilization of the 32 employees that were taking FF-CRA for the school closure. And we found that in the last month and a half, 29 have taken less than a total of 40 hours over that period of time and three have taken more than 60. So, you know, it's, it's a pretty small population. At this point, we don't see, you know, anyone being close to exhausting fully their leave banks, but that is something that we continue to monitor. The other reference point that we checked in on was how many people have less than 80 hours in their banks globally with our population here at Deschutes County. And we have about 200 employees, 80 of which are new hires that just haven't had the ability to quite accumulate that bank yet. They're working on it. And 54 of those 200 have less than 40 hours in their bank. So there are some folks who, you know, should they need a two-week quarantine period, for instance, and remote work was not available, you know, there, there could be some unpaid leave. In the county's temporary leave policy, we did allow for, for employees to go into a negative leave balance or borrow against future earnings without any, you know, negative, you know, impact in terms of their benefits or, you know, oftentimes that comes along with some sort of coaching or discipline. And so, you know, allowing them to go through that without any negative impact. And then we also have a leave donation option available as well. So, you know, there's the update of information. In terms of decisions, you know, what we have right now is our temporary leave policy that we've committed to reviewing regularly. And I think it's time for us to kind of consider, you know, do we want to make any changes to the policy? Do we want to, you know, just continue sort of waiting and watching? So those are just some kind of conversation points for the commissioners. Any thoughts or questions?
Kathleen, you forgot to change the background and policy implications. The memo that we got, what, a month or two ago, said December 31st, 2021, and that didn't get corrected, that it ended 2020. It's on the memo that we, we received.
The updated memo you received?
Yeah, I'm looking at today's memo and it still has 2021 on it, but I saw it.
I apologize for that oversight. We'll get that corrected, Commissioner Dare.
Kathleen, I have a couple of questions. First off, there's this, there was this piece in your background document that, that said that, you know, that talked about tax credits and how, you know, okay, we, we're not a taxed entity, so we don't necessarily have a use for tax credits. I am familiar with other programs where public entities are able to generate tax credits and then sell them to someone else. They don't get the full value. You know, for example, the, the state business energy tax credit program that, that, that used to exist, the, you know, a public entity could do a renewable energy project or an energy efficiency project, generate tax credits, then turn around to a bank and sell them the tax credits. And, you know, you didn't get 100% of the, the value of the tax rate, but you got something. So I, I, it may be that there's, that, you know, the types of tax credits that are, that are fungible like that is, are limited, but I, I'm, I was curious if we had, if we had explored that at all with these tax credits. And, and it, and I don't know if it, if it's even relevant anymore if we didn't claim them, you know, last year, whether, whether it would still be possible, but.
Right, so I can check in with Greg Munn on that. That was, you know, it's, it's a little bit more his wheelhouse, but, you know, in our discussions on looking at kind of the, the legislation that was approved to allow this to be a voluntary option, you know, his analysis was that there aren't any abilities for us to collect on that. Retroactively, or talking about what we did last year, my understanding is that departments were reimbursed through the CARES Act funding. And so I don't, I don't know if we'd be allowed to do both in that situation, but I'll definitely discuss those opportunities with, you know, our CFO.
Thank you. And my other, my other question was about, you know, leave availability for, for employees. Do we have, when I, the couple of years I worked for the state within my agency, people were essentially able to share leave, you know, so somebody who had a lot of leave built up, you know, someone had a hardship, you know, medical type situation, they could share leave with someone else, with someone who's having a hardship situation. Do we have that kind of opportunity and flexibility here inside the county?
We do, yeah. We call it the employee leave donation program. There are some parameters around it and there are some instances when, you know, you have to have had like 40 hours in your bank, but there's ability for exceptions to be made at the county administrator's discretion. And, and, you know, just to give some insight, we have used that recently for people needing leave. And we've actually also approved the exceptions for situations, kind of like I just talked about, where someone maybe didn't have the ability to have, you know, long enough employment with us to have obtained the 40 hours or even hours that they need to take. So we, we have taken advantage of, of that and, and it is there as that kind of safety net. And that was one of the things that I was talking about is, you know, we, we do have some sort of safety nets built in that other organizations are either creating, like City of Bend created a leave donation program kind of specific to this pandemic. And so we already have that established.
So, so if the, if the number of people who are at risk of, you know, of, of going negative or underwater with their, with their leave is, is relatively small and we feel like there's substantial sympathy for, for COVID situations within the county, the county staff, then there are, yeah, that there, there may be multiple safety nets to, 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 to catch people and to be able to provide for their, their need for some leave if, if they have a COVID situation.
Correct, correct. There are, there's, you know, the, like I was talking about that leave donation program and then in our temporary policy, the one sort of different program that we created specific to the pandemic is that ability to borrow against the future earnings. It is up to a maximum. And actually, in the temporary policy, we've, you know, proposed some clarifying language around it, just, you know, having had this program in effect now and having had like one or two people utilize it, we've learned and, and wanted to put some additional clarifying information into the policy.
So for decisions to help either, you know, yeah, set direction to this, federal legislation is going to be discussed again, so there may be some big things coming down. And then we are offering, Commissioner Chang just mentioned, you know, the opportunities for the leave, but there's also remote work flexibility opportunities that are out there. So I'm pretty comfortable, as one commissioner, I'm pretty comfortable where we're at right now, but that brings me back to the policy discussion. You know, you mentioned a point in time of updating or changing the policies. Do, can, yeah, help us through that, you know, is, is there a need for that right now or?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's a couple of items that would be nice to go ahead and make changes in the policy and I can walk us through those. And, you know, the, the first is that, you know, we promised we would look at it regularly. The, the first kind of decision point would be, we have a lot of information about the FF-CRA in the policy itself, you know, as we were required to do so. It does, it does indicate a sunset date of December 31st, 2020. I did get that one correct. And so, you know, there's not a necessary, we don't necessarily have to amend the policy to remove that. I would say we could keep it in there with that sunset date or we can go ahead and amend the policy to fully remove that. And then if, you know, federal legislation requires us to start it again or the board decides to, you know, voluntarily start that again, we can add it back in. So that's one decision point. And the other piece that we are recommending in the policy itself is on, if you have it in front of you, it's page seven of the policy. And I apologize, I'm not sure what number in your board packet that is.
It is page 105 in our packet. It's the item number four. Are you talking about that, where you, employees would leave prior to paying back? Yes, that, that line is what you added?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so what we're recommending is putting clarification in there, you know, that when an, should an employee leave, you know, in, in many instances, our expectation is that they have to go into a negative TML, but when they return to work, they'll be able to work back and sort of, you know, pay that back, if you will, through future earnings. But should an employee, for whatever reason, leave employment and not continue to work and pay that back, it is stated in here that they would be expected to repay that to the county.
Okay, and then, so this is a county policy signed by administrator. So at the board level, we would put direction to accepting these proposed changes and, you know, kind of blessing it at a point in time for administrator approval would be the process.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Any thoughts of either just leaving it be or putting direction to it right now?
Well, adding that one line is what you, yes.
Well, that's a substantive thing, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's significant and I think it's good, a good idea to clarify it now just in case something does happen.
Does that mean, yeah, we'll have a, an updated policy with a current date on it? And then knowing that federal, federal legislation may offer something down the pike here, quit pretty quick also. Do you support that?
I support that addition.
Yeah, okay.
And, and sitting tight.
Yep, okay, good. So that puts direction to it at this point in time. And then would that be an agenda item in the future or is that enough direction?
Probably just do it a minute's motion right now to accrue authorized county administrator's signature as amended.
Updating the policy. There you go. So support for that then?
Yes.
I move that we, I move that we authorize county administrator's signature as amended for this temporary leave policy.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So there we go. So we'll have a nice, stable point to, to reference the next thing that comes along.
Exactly.
Anything else?
Well, I think the next agenda item.
Yep, okay, next item then. Item number 14, county administrator recruitment announcement.
So, just from the HR's perspective, I sent a notice in to you guys, but I think you had started your board meeting, that we are live with the recruitment. It is open. We have both the administrator splash page open and, you know, huge thanks to both the HR team as well as Whitney and. the HR team, as well as Whitney, in, you know, getting that up and running. We have a nice landing page for folks to kind of come and look and find additional information, find links about our community, about the position, about the organization, and really kind of a streamlined process where they can click to apply from that page, or they can click to apply through our sort of standard job opportunities page. And next steps are, my team is currently working to have this posted at through all of our advertising, you know, sites, and working to sort of get that pushed out into the community and the appropriate locations for advertising.
Great, well, I know that sometimes we get the the Naco County News, and on the back page, it talks about administrator or or different positions in counties around the country. So I always thought about that. It's like, this might be the time to have it in the the Naco News. I don't know how it gets in there if we pay for it, or if they just pick them up or whatever. But so that was live yesterday, is kind of the official date?
Actually, it's it's this morning.
Okay, today, this morning, okay. And then for how long, or what's the mindset for that at this time?
Sure, so we're running for, I think it's about five, four and a half, five weeks. So applications are due by March 21st, and we'll review. We will be peeking at them, you know, throughout the time, just to make sure we're getting good response and adjust our approach either to advertising or, you know, soliciting assistance if needed. But at this point, we're, you know, putting, I think, a really good, you know, announcement out there, and just gonna sit and wait for the, you know, embarrassment of riches to come in of applicants.
There you go. Okay, well, so that is the, you know, the public announcement to Deschutes County Administrator Position Recruitment has opened as of today officially, and it will be basically open to, yeah, national, you know, anybody, so.
Do we have, do we have any kind of channels through our AOC network that we should be trying to get this out through as well?
Well, I I'm sure it's news already, but yeah, we can, we can have either the director send it out, or I don't know, you know. So this is the starting point, yeah, for five or six weeks, people will be talking about it.
And AOC is on our list for advertising, so we'll, we'll get there as well. But I've sent the links out actually to each of you commissioners, if you have contacts that you'd like to forward it to as well, you know, we'd be happy to connect on that.
Great.
Commissioners, if I I could offer, and and my guess is, is crack team as Kathleen has, they're probably already over this, but I was, I will share with them, as a current county administrator, I have a pretty good idea of where the job opportunities are posted. AOC, Naco are some. ICMA is probably the best, as far as the central location for job listings all over the country at different of different types. There's a National Association of County Administrators. I was gonna send it to all of my colleagues around the state to share with their staff as well. Some of them probably won't, they'll probably hide it, but.
Yes, really.
And also, as you share the opportunity with anyone, I'm I'm perfectly happy and willing to discuss the job as the incumbent with anybody that might be interested, to kind of give them the, you know, kind of the straight skinny on on all the great things that are part of it. So I'm happy to speak with or communicate with anybody that you'd care to pass on to me.
Great, well, and from my experience, we've used recruiting, you know, outside support in the past. So there there's people out there that are professional recruit people that have been involved with the Deschutes County, you know, so I just think of the last half a dozen years or so, you know, the fact that, you know, people know who we are, you know, the the recruiting agencies know who we are also. Wonderful, okay, thank you very much. Thanks for getting that together.
Thank you.
So at this time, with our schedule, starting at 9:00 AM and committing to a COVID update at 10 o'clock, we're gonna be breaking for a lunch break, and we will be re, we'll be getting back together after lunch at 1:00.
Yes.
What was I looking for?
Resumee.
Reconvene, that's what I was looking for.
Meaning, yes, the big word.
Okay, we're reconvening afternoon session Wednesday, February 17th, 2021, and item number 15 is a public hearing. Go ahead, Peter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner. This is a hearing to consider the board's signature on document 2021-0155, which would be a noise variance to allow nighttime paving on the Tumalo Place Road Project. This is where the road department is building a roundabout at Tumalo Place and Tumalo Road there by the Deschutes Junction Interchange. It would be paving Tumalo Place, which is the north leg of that roundabout, which connects Tumalo Road to US 97, all the southbound on and off traffic. We had a work session on February 10th. I would advise the board then, I had not heard any public comments. I haven't heard any public comments still in the intervening week, so I have nothing to share with you on that point. If you want me to share my screen to show you the project area, I can do that.
Well, so, yeah, let's acknowledge, this is, the public hearing is open on this matter, and it's a simple public hearing, somebody that wants to provide input in support or opposition to this, and it's for a noise variance is 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 the public hearing. Which you just said, I'm just making sure, it's it's officially open. Please proceed.
If you'd like me to share the screen to show you the project area, I can do that.
Yes.
Members of the public wants to see it. Okay, here we go. So this is the area that we sent the notice out to. It's based on the type of construction equipment we're going to use. So everyone within the blue circle was notified of this public hearing. And then the project itself is this bright yellow line that's going from Tumalo Road to connect to US 97. It's a three-week construction project. It would happen, this leg would be built sometime between the signing of the ordinance, if you do approve it, or not the ordinance, the the document, and then would be done by June 30th. That does mean they're gonna be paving at night from February 17th to June 30th. It's just a three-week project. So somewhere in that, we'll call it February 17th window to June 30th window, that's when the three weeks would, a project would float during those three weeks. So with that, I don't have much more to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none. So this is a public hearing, as I mentioned. So do we have anybody on Zoom? We have nobody in the room. Anybody on Zoom in attendant phase, but may have, you can put, raise your hand if you'd like to speak on the matter. Looks like we may have someone. And then also, we'll look for phone numbers if there's anybody that has dialed in also. So, yeah, so Cody Smith's our our road engineer, but yeah, is there any member of the public joining us? Ask him to comment. Okay, so yeah, we're seeing no, no request to speak on this matter at this time. So with that, being duly noted, at 1:00 on this date, I will acknowledge we have a public hearing, and it's gonna be closed. This will be closing the public hearing on this matter. Opportunity came and went.
I'll just share that I know one of the families that lives right on Tumalo Road, he in the blue circle, and when I saw this, I asked them about it, and they said they'd been well notified about the project and about the noise variance, and they, and they were very enthusiastic about the project and said that they would, they would put up with a couple of weeks of noise in the middle of the night to get it.
It was probably just a couple nights, you know, maybe just two nights even, I mean, is my experience, you know, once they get the machines going, it just happens kind of fast. So, Cody, have any statement on that, or you're just stopping in to say hi?
Yeah, yeah, I I could just add, so, so, you know, as Peter said before, that this this noise variance permit is for what's actually gonna be the last stage of our Tumalo Road, Tumalo Place intersection improvement project, where we're building a roundabout at that intersection right now. That project's under construction right now. Contractor currently is is kind of in the midst of stage three of the five stages of this project. So we, first stage of the project was we built the detour road for Tumalo Road, basically moved the intersection with Tumalo Place to the north slightly. That left the 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 area for the roundabout open for for construction, so the contractor's done all the rough grading there, got all the base rock in there, have actually got all the curbs for the the center islands and the splitter islands on Tumalo Road, and then also for the southerly driveway to the Three Sisters Seventh Day Advent School all poured. The project's kind of shut down right now just due to weather. Kind of the the next key work component's gonna be the the base lift paving for for that, for the majority of the roundabout itself, and and just because of temperatures and just the fact that the local asphalt plants are are more or less shut down right now, project's kind of on on pause right now. But as soon as soon as temperatures start coming back up and and we get some more sunny days and asphalt plants start opening up, we'll, construction will be ramping right back up out there. Yeah, this this night work is generally gonna be for the the last stage of this, which would be the kind of completing the the terror, the Tumalo Place leg of the roundabout, so so finishing the median splitter island for that section, and then paving, not not just the roundabout leg itself, but but with this, we're also gonna gonna go ahead and pave the entirety of Tumalo Place all the way back to Highway 97. Our, in our contract, we're actually only giving the contractor a week to do this work. Yeah, but I generally, I I think the majority are probably gonna get all this work done in in probably the course of three nights. Doing this at night, what what that's letting us do is it's gonna let us close down Tumalo Place, which is the effectively the southbound on and off ramp for Highway 97. So so it lets us close this, close that down at night and do, perform that work at night so we can keep that road open during the daytime hours. We're anticipating right now for the contractor's master master schedule, this works scheduled to occur sometime in mid to late April. We're, we think we're probably on track for it to happen at that time. And and again, this is kind of the part of the last stage of the project, so once, once this work's done, the the project's pretty close to, will be pretty close to substantial completion. So, yeah, and and beyond that, just was here just in case there was any other questions I could answer.
Well, thank you very much. This is a Deschutes County project for the Deschutes County citizens, applying to ourselves for this noise permit, but it's really notifying the community and making sure there's, nobody really upset with the process, they are, they're well informed that it's coming, and yeah, it sounds like it'll be a couple nights, so.
And hopefully, the weather will be cooperating
Yeah.
by then, so.
So at this time, is there, yeah, with the public hearing closed, is there support for this?
I, I move to approve document number 20-21155, a noise permit to allow nighttime construction to add to the northbound leg of the Tumalo Road, Tumalo Place Roundabout.
Second.
And that's been seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing non-Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, thank you very much for that process.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Peter. Thanks, Cody.
Item number 16, consideration of approval for a certified local government grant. Tanya Salzman, yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I think we're getting this Zoom thing down pretty well. We're switching between topics real, real smoothly these days.
Yeah, that's, it's good, it's good. It's taken us a year, but I think we're well
Yeah.
on the gene now. Yeah, yeah, I'm proud of us.
That's encouraging. It's only been a year now, okay.
For the record, my name is Tanya Salzman. I'm a senior planner with Community Development, and I'm here to request board approval to apply for a certified local government grant for historic preservation. This grant is for $10,000 with a one-to-one match of county funds or time. The application is due at the end of next week on February 26th, and the grant would go roughly be awarded in April, assuming all the kind of contracting goes correctly, and it will be completed by August 31st, 2022. And this grant is something that we have applied for, actually, let me stop for a moment. I am the staff liaison now for the Historic Landmarks Commission, so that is why I'm here in that, in that position. So this is a grant that's that we've applied for for years and years, and it is non-competitive, so we, I believe, have always been awarded it. The amount fluctuates a little bit from year to year. This year, it's $10,000. I believe last year it was 11 and a half. And it's just used to to do all kinds of historic preservation activities. Some of them are tied to May Preservation Month, some are tied to just general education. And we have a list of of projects here that in concert with the HLC, the Historic Landmarks Commission, which met on February 1st, kind of gathered together a list of projects that all basically can fit in this grant application. The memo I provided you gives a brief overview, a brief list of these projects. I will say that this year, we're really excited that the City of Sisters is being an active participant in in this grant, this potential grant. They've suggested a few projects that are pretty exciting, so we're kind of hoping to emphasize those. And then there's just a few other projects, such as the Policy and Procedures Manual for the Historic Landmarks Commission, things that are, you know, helpful to do. The grant will give us an extra nudge for staff time for that sort of thing. You may recall the the Planning Commission recently underwent a Policy and Procedures Manual project, that sort of thing. So I can run down the list of the potential projects if you'd like, and it's it's a fairly simple application, and we're just looking for the board's approval on that.
I don't know, you need to go down the list? Does anything jump out at you as the, you know, kind of the meat of the the projects? Cause.
I mean, to me personally, I think the the items from Sisters are are great, because, as I said, they're taking a slightly more active role than they have in the past, so they're kind of fully formed projects. One of them is an update to their historical information tour. They have a brochure existing right now, and they kind of wanna update it due for a self-guided walking tour around Sisters, to just give it some jazzed-up maps and, you know, make it just very user-friendly. Obviously, in these COVID times, we're going away a little bit from in-person events or speakers, which is a lot of kind of what occupied the grant funds in previous years. But but things like a self-guided tour, you know, it's appropriate during COVID, it's appropriate anytime, really. So that's kind of a good thing for the buck, I think. Another Sisters project that I think is really interesting is an update to their story map. The board's probably familiar with the story map these days. We've been using it for wildfire, we're going to be using it for a wildlife update. It's essentially kind of a more in-depth, more interactive website, a little more kind of multi-layered. So they plan to update that, if possible, with kind of looking at some of their historic sites in Sisters and kind of delving into each of those in an interactive process. So I think that's pretty exciting. There's all kinds of good stuff in there.
Yes. Great. Well, it's exciting seeing Sisters so engaged at this point in time. It really fits well with the kind of the Sisters, you know, planning efforts that have gone on, and so this is a kind of a subcommittee project that we can share the line up well at this point in time.
Yes, don't forget Sisters is now 2,985 residents. They've grown tremendously in the last few years. In fact, my friend is sure that there's 15,000 people there now.
Well, yeah.
She's like, oh, my gosh. Anyway, I go, no, it's
Around the area.
It's only 2,985, but if you look at the sign going into town, it's like 2,000. So they've definitely grown a lot. And when does that sign get updated? After the census, or?
That's my guess.
You think so? After the census?
I think so, yeah. I think it's every 10 years. I don't think, otherwise, to update it every year would be a lot of work, I think.
Okay, well, I was noticing it, so I'm thinking like, okay, we've grown 1,000 in the last 10 years.
Great.
I move that the board approves this application for the certified local government grant.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you very Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on your assignment.
Yes, on your new assignment. We are very happy that you're, you're going to be there.
Thank you very much.
Item number 17, discussion of joint Board of Commissioners' Planning Commission Agenda. So Nick LeLac, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chair DeBoeck, Commissioners. Um, Peter Gatawski may be joining as well. Next week, the Board of County Commissioners is scheduled to conduct, uh, a joint, uh, meeting with the Deschutes County Planning Commission. The two Commissions generally meet each year in February or March at the start of, early, um, i- in the year, and, uh, and so we have that scheduled, that meeting scheduled next week, I know. Um, we have two new Planning Commissioners and of course, one new County Commissioner, so it'll be a great opportunity to introduce, um, all of the new members, and the Planning Commission's really looking forward to that. The Planning Commission has discussed this, uh, a couple of times at their two prior meetings in January, um, and they like to help contribute to the agenda. Chair DeBoeck met with, uh, Chair Hudson, the, the Planning Commission Chair, this is his second term, and Vice Chair Kieris, um, just, uh, about 10 days or so ago, just to, to begin to discuss.
Yeah, we had a 15-minute meeting where we just compared notes. Uh, Chair Hudson had some ideas and we just went down them. I think I may have added an item or two. I don't know if you have that list, I didn't bring it today, but just kind of agenda, you know, topics to be able to be discussed.
Great. Um, what, what the Planning Commission suggested is, we, we kind of do the initial round robin of, of introductions, um, just if, if the Planning Commissioners in particular would like to just share with you a little bit about their backgrounds and what their skillsets are, um, as they contribute to the, to the Deschutes County Planning Commission, so you have a good sense of what they bring to the table individually, and of course, they look forward to, um, any information you'd like to share about yourselves as well. Um, we will provide a memorandum, as we do each year. I already have a good part of it drafted, so that you have a good sense of, of the Commissioners, what area they represent, whether they're in their first or second terms, as well as their terms and where they're at in that process. So you have a good sense of that, um, even though they may share that information as well. Um, they would like to, to hear, uh, about the Board's draft, and, and I don't know that it's been adopted yet, but the Board's draft 2021 goals, what your priorities are for the year ahead, and then anything that applies to them. So, um, Tom and I can coordinate on what those are, or the Board, you may share what, what some of your priorities are, just, we don't need to have anything formal, but it's just a conversation that they just like to know, um, hear directly from, uh, from the Board what your, what your priorities are and how they may relate to the Planning Commission going forward. So, uh, from wildfire, fire or rural accessory dwelling units, addressing the housing challenges, um, a lot of those issues that, that I've already shared with them, um, based on the meeting that I, that, based on the retreat when I was at the meeting, um, uh, but they just like to hear that from, from, from the Commissioners.
Commissioners, that's on your agenda for, I'm not sure if it's, we landed on Monday or Wednesday, but either way, we'll, you will have a chance to look at the, hopefully finally, final version before the meeting with the Planning Commission on Thursday.
Well, that's perfect. Um, we, we just provide a, a snapshot of what some of the, the major, uh, Planning Division work plan, uh, projects are for the year ahead, just so everybody's aware of those. We don't, we're not going to go into any detail on most of those, but just to, to kind of set the table for what those projects may be, and then the adoption process for the Community Development Department's work plan, which we are proposing to move up just a bit from prior years. We'll discuss that. One of the issues the Planning Commission would like to, to discuss with the Board is their role, um, and the coordination opportunities with, with the County Commission, they, County Board, they would really like to be as useful and helpful as possible to you. Um, they are the County Byer Comprehensive Plan, the Designated Citizen Involvement Advisory Committee, um, and, and sometimes we go through stretches where we don't have a lot of work for them. Um, we've kept them busy the last several months with orientations to various chapters of the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan as we, um, hope to begin that later this year, which is, which has kept them busy, but they really are interested in, in discussing their role with you. One of the topics we discussed last week, and it could very well come up, um, at the meeting next week, is, um, can they provide some, some services to the Board such as, uh, helping develop, um, policy options for the Board to consider? Um, and, and the example that we discussed is, on the work plan, there's, there's a project to explore or consider regulating hemp in rural residential zones. So one of the ideas was, is that something that the Board, maybe as a pilot project, would assign to the Planning Commission? Planning Commission, explore with staff what those options may be, and then present those options to the Board, not the text amendments, but just to, to inform the Boards, um, understanding of what the issues are. They might gather some public input, and then the Board could then decide, okay, now do we want to take this and initiate formal amendments to Deschutes County Code with public hearings or not? So that was just one example of how, um, they might provide, uh, an additional service to the Board, and maybe that's not the right project. We were just exploring how they might, um, provide input on, for example, a couple of years ago, they conducted a series of panels with water experts to really understand that issue in Deschutes County. They provided a great report, um, to the Board. So I, I know they would like to explore that with you. They would also like to discuss, um, just where the county is at with wildfire. And so, uh, we'll, you, uh, we'll have that meeting with you next week on February 24th, so it'll be the day before, so you'll be well-versed on that.
Oh, you're gonna have our meeting on the 24th?
We're gonna discuss it on the 24th.
I was getting nervous because that is my husband's birthday, and I'm so glad this meeting is on the 25th. I go, oh honey, let's go to a Planning Commission meeting, and then I'll take you out to dinner. I'm sure that would go over really big.
It's your husband's birthday on the 24th?
Yes.
It's my wife's birthday on the 24th.
Oh, really? Well, Nick, where should we take them?
It's a small world. Um, so those are really the major topics, um, for, for the joint meeting. Generally, it's, it's probably an hour and a half, maybe two hours at the very most. Uh, we keep it somewhat informal. I, uh, under, if, if you all wish to be here, of course, that'll be your decision. Uh, only Chair Hudson will be here in the room. I will be here as well. The other Commissioners, um, will all participate, uh, via Zoom. So, um, that'll really be your, your call, but, uh, Sharon, Tom and I can coordinate and, uh, set up the room accordingly if we have the tables over here and, as we do on the floor, however you wish, um, we'll make it happen.
So if we're here, we'll see most of them on these little screens? Or would, would we sit up here, or would they, we, we'll, we'll all sit down?
Generally, in the, in the past, we've all sat down here on the, on the floor. It's just that, uh, six of the Commissioners, um, would like to, while they would like to meet in person, they would really prefer, most of them have stated publicly, they would prefer to be vaccinated before they, um, engage in more public processes, not knowing who all might attend, et cetera.
Yeah. We've done several meetings now where everybody's been remote, and it seems, and get a close-up of.
Yeah.
Chair DeBoeck.
In the she-shit.
As opposed to.
Yeah. I'll probably do a remote, yeah.
Um, but Chair Hudson is, is definitely gonna come here?
Oh, not necessarily. We can, we can, um, we can organize it however you wish. The Planning Commission did conduct an entirely remote, uh, meeting, at their last meeting because it was the night of the snowstorm, so it was only gonna be Chair Hudson coming in from Tumalo, and I said, I just suggested, and he agreed, let's keep it all remote. And so that worked very well. They're, they're flexible on how you wish to conduct the meeting.
I, I love to meet people in person, but, um, you know, uh, I, I can do it either way. Uh, if he's gonna be here, I'll, I'll definitely make the effort to be here in person, but.
And that'll be fine in this room, yeah, having a few people. Okay. So, uh, yeah, and it may be, and we can talk about this at the meeting, it may be kind of a quiet period, you know, uh, we've got not a lot of changes in the statewide land use system that are giving us local authority to even digest the next big thing, but yeah, I mean, uh, if, uh, accessory dwelling units or, or zones, if there's any opportunities to discuss anything in the, in the zones of the rural county, all of a sudden, there could be a heck of a, you know, burst of activity. So it has been kind of quiet for, for just tangible, how do we add houses, or what can we do for people that people are asking for?
I, one, one item that we discussed at the, at the, at the goal-setting, uh, session, uh, retreat was, um, trying to understand, uh, you know, land use bottlenecks around, um, mobile home parks. Um, is that, is that the kind of thing that, you know, we could ask the, the Planning Commission to do, do some homework for us and help us, you know, help tee up, tee up a solution for us?
They would fully embrace that. I'm certain that they would fully embrace that.
Interesting.
Yes.
And then don't forget the campground thing we were talking about, the RV park, and the fact that, what is it, you can only stay there 14 days or something? I mean, there's, those have very limited rules, so I would think that might be something we want to look at, because we can't ask people to move unless there's someplace for them to move to. Homeless people?
Mm-hmm. Those are great projects for the Planning Commission, exactly what they're looking for. And we, while they've had a quiet period, we do, as Chair DeBoeck just mentioned, there are projects on the horizon for them to, to consider, but these would be additional items that they would really enjoy participating in.
Okay, so that's in preparation. We'll have kind of a final proposed agenda in preparation for the meeting for next Thursday.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick.
At this time, item number 18, parole and probation facility expansion project. Ken Hales and Lee Randall and whoever else might show up?
Nick's cleaning duties.
Safety first, safety first.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ken Hales for the Community Justice Department, and with me to make sure I get my facts straight is Facilities Director Lee Randall. Um, what we have before you this afternoon is a request to proceed with the next stage of work in the parole and probation expansion project, more specifically to proceed with the final design work, uh, and preparation of the construction documents to enable the contractor slash general, general, construction manager, general contractor to develop the guaranteed maximum price for the project. Uh, as you know, we've been, uh, working on this project since 2018. There's been a series of review meetings with the Commission at various stages along, uh, the process. If I have my notes correct, I think the last meeting was in... April of 2020, we presented to the Board pretty much the same request to move with this, uh, next stage of activity. At that time, the Board chose not to approve our request, and we were instructed to go back and explore additional opportunities or alternatives to, uh, option A and B design. A team of us met and did that over, uh, July through September. We looked at, uh, probably almost a dozen different alternatives. Uh, none of them, uh, were viable alternatives. None of them either satisfied the operational requirements or were economically any more beneficial than constructing on the campus. Therefore, we return to you at this point with a request to re-initiate, re-initiate the project and move forward.
So my understanding is, yeah, um, CMGC has been selected and, and basically just stopped, you know, so because, uh, CMGC contractors, the one that can, uh, you know, kind of finalize the design and the numbers. So by having that process, uh, on the shelf, this is a pretty simple kind of on-off switch for this project, for the, a decision for the Board of Commissioners, as I say, it was a, a, a policy choice at the Board level last year that, uh, put a hold on this. Um, yeah, any thoughts, Commissioners?
Oh, I did ask, um, at our retreat, um, how many people that actually worked in the old stabilization center building are now actually working within, on county property? Are they still working from home? I was just curious, um, you know, how big your team is now that actually is meeting on county land?
At this time, we're operating, since today, we're operating at a 50% capacity. That is, 50% of the staff are onsite, 50% are offsite. That includes the, uh, parole and probation headquarters office on the second floor of the adult community justice building and the modular annex building.
Okay, and the modular annex, remind me, is that like 5,000 square feet? Cause I think that's what you were saying you needed.
In some ways, it's an ideal time to do a project, because the, not everyone is in the building right now.
Yeah.
So that 50%, are they, does it switch? Or are, are some employees just never in the building? Is that what you're saying? I was just.
No, these are all part of our COVID response protocols. Uh, prior to the governor's decision to open things up a little bit more in Deschutes County, I had hardly nobody working in the office, uh, because we're at extreme risk. Uh, starting today, we moved from COVID response level three to COVID response level two. At COVID response level two, we opened the doors again to the public. Uh, offenders show right up to the door again. Uh, we staffed the office at 50% because there's no way to have social distancing at 100%. It's just too dense. Uh, so we have 50% staffing. Uh, somebody may work two days a week, off three days a week. Uh, the supervisors manage that with, with their own staff to keep the staffing at that ratio. And that's true for both the adult division and the juvenile division.
Any other thoughts?
I'll just mention that, uh, I had the opportunity to visit the, uh, the, both the adult and juvenile parole and probation operations last week as, you know, just part of one of my, one of my, uh, general department orientations, and, uh, I was definitely, um, impressed isn't the right word, but, but after the visit, I definitely, I got a, got a better understanding of, um, the facility, uh, constraints, um, that, that those departments are working under, uh, right now, and the, the need for a project like this. So I'm, I'm very supportive of moving forward. It, it does seem like, um, there was a pause, we took a look at a, a, a range of other options, and, um, uh, you know, if my colleagues are satisfied that, you know, you, you took a good look at those other options, um, and they, they, none of them was as attractive as this, as, you know, going back to option B, then, you know, I, I don't see any reason not to move forward.
Well, I'm supportive of option B at this time. Uh, one of my thoughts is, is there, is it gonna be a cycle of kind of reviewing what the future might look like? Because that was even put together before COVID, so it was, you know, standard, standard flow or, or, you know, as, as done in the past, and the future might not look the same. So I just think there's probably one more cycle of, is this the right, I don't know, scope?
Yeah, we will revisit that design in this next stage of work. It may impact, uh, you know, we have that one area that's shelled out. It may impact how much we shell out, uh, some things like that. Um, so that, that'll work out. We've learned a lot of things during the period with COVID and the impact of possible remote work. Uh, for the most part, um, you know, that's allowed me to be much more comfortable with employing temporary alternative schedules for staff with temporary disability, uh, you know, having, um, you know, be on modified duty because of an injury or because of some health or personnel circumstance. It gives us more flexibility, but it's still basically a face-to-face, you show up, get your office, visit, do your program type of activities. And during this COVID period, we've ramped up considerably alternative contacts, phone contacts, video contacts, collateral contacts, but we haven't been able to keep up with the face-to-face, and that's what we need to re-initiate. And that's what's really critical if you're gonna do the evidence-based program, uh, skill building with, with offenders is the face-to-face interaction.
So, well, that, yeah, brings you to the con- concept that, yeah, just that meeting space is probably the, the most valuable thing, you know, either a small room for two people to be talking, or a larger room for programming too, so, and either way, you need elbow room.
I also, you know, want to put in a plug for that first floor area, because that's a training area and some meeting spaces. It's gonna be a very nice resource for the whole campus, because it's on the first floor, not within the second floor. It's so much more accessible to everybody else. And right now, on the campus, there's really nothing available, uh, to do that. If you go to the MAC and the Surest Office, you have to check in, get a badge, go up through it, and because of that, it's not as accessible to many people.
Yeah.
A 911 has a couple of nice, uh, spaces, but there's only a couple of them. So trainings, uh, hosting a lot of network meetings with our peers and colleagues, uh, they come in here to bend, they spend a couple of days, do this stuff. in here to bend, they spend a couple of days, do this stuff. This is an opportunity to re-initiate that kind of stuff.
Commissioner Dyer, any thoughts?
No, I was just reading the advantages and disadvantages, and you're saying, according to this memo, I don't know when it was dated, the summary, I guess. Oh, I was wondering, are, I know we appointed a committee of outside experts. Was that appointed after you had all these meetings from, what is it, you said, to September? Did that committee ever look at this project, Eric?
They have not looked at the project, because we're waiting to see if the board wants to assign projects to the committee. Really, the facility review committee serves at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, and really, it'll be the board assigning the committee projects.
Okay. So they didn't look at it then. So who were the people then that looked at it for those couple of months last year?
The committee involved Lee, Eric, myself, Tom, the property manager, Kristy Bollinger, Dan from Lee's shop, and Commissioner Henderson attended one of those meetings, too.
All right. Thank you. So what is the dollar amount then? I know option B is saving some money, so what kind of a figure are we looking at now?
I think around $5 million is the latest estimate we've had.
And that would be for direct construction costs and some soft costs. Overall, the entire project, the most recent budget estimates were at $6 million. And the savings for option B over option A, which was the original option of building out over the existing building, was about $500,000 in direct construction costs. So that was the discussion we'd had with the board, which then moved us in the direction of exploring a new construction addition directly adjacent to the existing building.
Okay. Thank you.
So for that project review committee, one of my thoughts would be to have them look at it at some point, whichever is kind of a, you know, a stable point of reference, for feedback, but not as a stopping point, as just a, you know, a project for the Board of Commissioners to have, you know, these experienced people in the industry take a look at it, because the concept is, you know, commercial, long-term construction opposed to, you know, residential construction and some of the building materials. So, I mean, there's information I'd love to kind of get from that, but as I say, I'd see it as a parallel path, not a start-and-stop and point in the middle of this project, is my thought.
Yeah, if we have a review group set up like that, we should be using it.
They were actually set up after...
Yeah.
So it was one of the reasons why we set them up. I think it's...
Use them now.
Yeah, no, they're, it's a, I think, a really good group of people that were put on that board, so, I don't know. Could they set up a meeting and pull this together?
Yes, staff can set up a meeting with them. What I'd recommend is that we come back to the board with some specific questions to ask the committee, so that they're clear on their assignment from the board, and so we could draft something for the board to look at.
Great. Yeah, that's appropriate for, as Commissioner DeBon was describing, a parallel process. We're not, you know, I don't think we're asking for this review to stop us in our tracks, but, you know, if there's review and input that they can provide at this point, you know, as we're moving forward to, you know, make the project better, or...
This is Lee Randall. One thing I would mention is that we're at about the conceptual stage of the drawings, and so there would be opportunity going forward, if the board were to direct us, to restart that design process to the point of construction documents. There's some decision points along the way that the facilities review committee could weigh in on and provide some input back to the board in a parallel process, as you're mentioning. So we could proceed with the design firm putting together further construction documents based on the adjacent addition concept, and then as we get to things like finishes, exterior finishes, particular structural types of components, there may be some decisions about steel structure versus wood structure, things like that, if the board were interested, are things that that group of professionals could weigh in on potentially.
We haven't talked about, yeah, wood structures. What about a...
Sounds great.
Sounds like a perfect time for them, for their first project.
That's where I was going with it, yeah. We haven't even thrown some of that out there.
Did you guys consider cross-laminated timber?
Well, we hadn't really gotten to the structural part of the building yet, we're still in conceptual. So cross-laminated timbers, you know, that's an expanding field, and that's something that could be considered for a government building. I know that Clackamas County has had a large project recently, and there may be some learning opportunities there.
They did a large CLT school in Lane County as well.
Okay.
Well, and even if it's just some nice big glue lamb beams, maybe that's okay, just to show the wood. Okay.
Well, if we're talking about spending $6 million on this building, I definitely would like experts in the field outside of government employees to be looking at it just with their expertise. I think it's, we have to be very frugal. I heard about a project yesterday, spending a couple million dollars. You know what? We could spend a lot of money this week, and I just think we have to do it wisely. So that's why we asked to set that group up.
I mean, and it seems like, you know, when you were, Lee, when you were talking about finishes and things like that, you know, it really impressed me during the, during my tour, how the, you know, if your goal is restorative justice and you're trying to create a certain kind of atmosphere or environment, I believe that you all went through this with the stabilization center as well, you know? How do you kind of set up a, in that case, it was how do you set up like a therapeutic or respite-like atmosphere? And in this case, you know, how do you set up an atmosphere that is, you know, is, you know, kind of inviting and encouraging and, you know, makes parolees feel like, you know, this is a positive place for them to progress with their, with the work that they need to do.
Part of our design considerations was how to set up the atmosphere, particularly the waiting room, the ingress, how people move in a way that is inviting, de-escalates behavior instead of escalating behavior, and that's part of the facility design effort.
Give you a water feature, huh?
Yes, a water feature, of course, etched with Deschutes County on it.
Oh, they're very nice.
I would just mention as well that part of that input is helpful coming from the design team that's, you know, the board had previously approved and who was selected based on their experience with parole and probation buildings, law enforcement buildings, and the kind of programs that Ken's team runs. And so that outside design team input is critical, as well as on the construction side, the experienced CMGC team as an outside team, providing that input that has had experience building similar types of facilities as well. So they bring a wealth of experience from projects, similar projects that they've worked on in Oregon, so.
So I think we are looking for a minutes motion to approve the construction documents and CMGC contractor for option B specifically.
Okay.
I'm...
Go ahead.
I move to approve preparation of construction documents and the guaranteed maximum price by the construction manager slash general contractor for option B of the parole and probation office expansion design.
So we're going to get a number for this? Even though we're going to have these people look at it, and if they come up with something? Okay. You know, I don't want it to come in at $7 million. I'm not going to be happy. So I'll second it, but, yeah, guaranteed maximum price. We can't add a number at this point.
Okay, so it's been first and seconded. So construction manager, general contractor is the partner, so I've been through this before, is the partner that provides us the opportunity to have an open conversation as the final construction documents and choices are being made to lower or keep that cost low, different than a design, bid, and build process. So the idea is a feedback loop, and the goal is to keep it cost-effective. So I support that, and Commissioner Dyer, I mean, I'm very sensitive to what you're saying there, but, yeah, the final number has not been published. We're committing to getting that final number in partnership with the CMGC process, is that's what we're doing here. Okay, we'll call them for the vote unless there's any other discussion. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much. You know, I mean, this is an exciting time. We're moving forward on some projects right now.
Too bad we can't get it built before Ken retires.
There you go. So we had an opportunity for other items before COVID update at 10 o'clock this morning. Is there anything else, just for general other items? Seeing none, we will be taking just a quick break and switching to executive session. We have three different matters today we'll be doing, and then we will close up the meeting at the end of the day. Please proceed as discussed, or is that going to be appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. So seeing nothing else, let's do that then. At this time, we'll go back to a regular session for a few moments to the top of the hour. Yep. So we're confirming the stream is coming back to a publicly accessible. So we're out of executive session, and so we just had a session under 1926602H litigation, and in a generic fashion, we'd like to, a motion to proceed as discussed.
I move that we proceed as discussed regarding the litigation.
Second.
And just for clarification, is this a voting matter? Like, is this it, the procedure confirming?
Generally, you do that by consensus. You can vote if you choose to. Normally, when you vote on a motion coming out of executive session, it would be if there was a split. If it's unanimous, typically, the board just directs staff to proceed, but you could go either way. There's no right or wrong.
Okay. Well, yeah, so just acknowledging, I could kind of tell it, because it's so generic. But, yeah, since it's been moved and seconded, let's proceed. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, so. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We'll keep posted.
So at this time, we are going to go back into an executive session under...
You can leave, and I'll grab it.
We're confirming we're back online at the end of the day after our executive sessions. Okay, so I think the only item is to proceed as discussed, if we all agree on that. And with that, we will conclude our board meetings for the day. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.